Let me know when we're... Excellent. Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board. And finding a quorum of members present, I call this meeting to order. I recognize we started at 7:00, then it's 7:08. And we've started a little late, just because we needed a little more time for people to get here because of some of the wintery weather conditions. But we have four out of five, Natasha will be present shortly. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. For the record, I'll call the roll when I call your name, please state that you are present. Paul Alpert?
Present.
Artie Crocker?
Present.
Jean McKnight?
Present.
Obviously, I'm present. And Natasha Spata will be... Join us shortly. Lee Newman, Town Planning Director?
Present.
And Alex Clee, Assistant Town Planner?
Present.
The first item on our agenda is an A&R plan by Gordon Russell as the petitioner for property located at 12 and 18 Brookside Road in Needham. The packet included a letter from Attorney David Himmelberger noting that the revision of the site plan is to correct a property line for required setbacks. And this is on a plan that we previously approved before. And I guess, Lee, since then and now, the property... The house has been constructed and they needed to correct one small little section on the site plan.
Yes, my understanding is you're closer to the property line. This lot line transfer will correct that deficiency.
And so, Lee, is the plan compliant?
Yes, it is.
Do my colleagues have any comments or questions? Paul, I'll start with you.
No, wait a minute.
Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Jean, do you have any comments or questions on this?
No, no.
Neither do I. Can I have a motion to endorse the A&R plan as presented?
No move?
Second.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There is no nay, no abstentions. By a vote of four out of four, the motion carries. The second item on our agenda is to determine permitting process for an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 97-12 in respect of 444 Hillside Avenue with 444 Group, Inc. as the petitioner. And I think the question before us is whether the change is really de minimis. And we'll go through that in a moment. But what I'd like to do, I think, is probably bring Attorney George Junta...
He's here.
And Jim O'Brien.
Yeah, George, I don't see the other person that you're expecting. Do you see them? Under a different name or something?
I do not.
Okay.
I don't...
Do you expect him? You expect him?
I do, but I know Jim is a bit technologically challenged. So he had some issues last time we had a meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm being concerned about whether there would be... I am too close of an abut to be involved with this. I went out and I know where, of course, the Needham Automotive is. And I went out and went to the farthest end of our property and walked across the street. It's not directly abutting right across the street. It is up the hill ways. And I think it does not affect the property of our condominium.
Is there a geographic restriction?
Is there a geographic...
Even gives it a certain minimum distance? Or is it an abut or two in a abut?
All I could do was take my feet. It's across the street.
I know where you are and I know where the property is.
And so, you know, I kind of walked 10 feet this way along the sidewalk. And then I walked across the street 50 feet.
But I'm saying, Lee, is there a statutory... Does the statutory requirement relate to a specific measure of distance?
Well, the special permit is like 300 feet within the property. That's for... But that's different than a conflict of interest question, I think.
Right, right. So...
In this case, Jean, I mean, we... They are... The permission has already been given for them to have that business.
Yes.
So nothing's changing related to that.
I realize that.
I can't see a conflict of interest.
I just felt like I should mention that it is near the condominium where I live and where I serve as a member of the Board of Trustees. But I disclose that...
I think you're right to bring it up, and I have absolutely no problem with your participating.
Okay, thank you.
Same here.
Same thing for the...
Thank you. In our packet, we have a letter from Attorney George Junta requesting a de minimis process, given that there's no contemplated change in the use of the property. But before I turn over to George, if necessary, just by a quick show of hands, is there anyone on the board who sees this as more than a de minimis change? So I'll do it by voice. Paul, do you see it as more than a de minimis change?
I see that where all that we're dealing with in this matter is adding parking spaces because they've added land to their original parcel that has parking spaces. And that the original permit dealt with parking issues and all. And we're not subtracting parking, we're adding parking. I think it's a de minimis change.
Jean, do you feel the same?
Yes, I do.
Artie, do you feel the same?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So do I. So I don't think we have a need to bring George in, unless, George, you feel compelled. Do you feel compelled to say?
No, I think the board's position is pretty clear. And so it basically answers the question and gives us guidance to go forward.
So lastly, Lee, are you satisfied that we'll advance this in a de minimis change?
Yeah, sure. I think that's the only reason I referred back to the board to make a decision on process.
So I think we have our decision. So then, we don't need to take a vote on this at this time because we'll deal with that later, correct, Lee?
Yeah, I think that's fine. We see the direction of our plan.
So I think, George, the board has direction. I think you have it. Lee has it. I don't think we need anything further, so we'll advance to the third of it on our agenda, which is a review of our zoning for the Housing Authority. George, thank you very much for being here just in case. We'll look forward to seeing the application and due chorus. So with that, what I'd like to do is invite our friends, Attorney Robert Smart and Chair Reg Foster of the Needham Housing Authority. I'll note for the record that we have in our packet a letter dated January 10 from Kate Fitzpatrick, the Town Manager, requesting that the zoning bylaw that we're drafting here, that Attorney Smart has drafted and we're reviewing and considering, to not include restrictions relating to age or ability/disability, which was an open question before. And with that, I guess what I'll do is open it up really to Reg and/or Attorney Smart if you want to walk us through where you're at, the changes.
Okay. Let me just get my glasses here. So the Affordable Housing District article. I made the changes that we talked about at the last meeting. So I think it's pretty straightforward in 3.16.2. There's a clause beginning with the word regardless, which I struck. I changed the reference to...
Let me follow you. Follow you. Where is that? Say it again.
This is 3.16.2.
3.2?
Yeah.
Yeah, regardless, thank you.
Right. So I just deleted that clause. I think the consensus was that that really wasn't needed. And then Section 4.10 is an incorrect reference. It should be 4.11, so I made that change.
You added 4.1.5.
I'm sorry?
You added Section 4.1.5, minimum required by law. Since you're going through it as to what you did.
Oh, yes. Oh, I guess that... Yeah, that's right. I guess that's new, too.
Yeah.
Right, thank you. Then, in definitions, we added a definition which Jean had suggested for multifamily housing. That's 3.16.3. Natasha, subsection C.
May I comment on that?
Yes.
I see no reason for the definition of multifamily dwellings that still appears above. I think the idea was this would be a substitute definition. There's no need for multifamily dwellings.
I guess I have to look at all the language and see whether that phrase is used or not.
Remember our last meeting, Bob, it was important to put in there, Bob.
What's that?
I thought the last meeting, I thought you were thinking... I thought you were the one that thought it was important to put something in there about this. I'm not sure how the rest of us felt, but I thought you...
My memory is that Jean has suggested that we have in this definition of multifamily housing, I'm just wondering about is if we need...
While you review that, I'm just going to say for the record that our colleague Natasha Spata has joined us and we are... And she is present for the record. And the distinction, Bob, I guess we're making is that we already have a definition for under Section 3.16.3 for multifamily dwellings.
Correct.
And separately, you've now proposed a definition for multifamily housing, which is similar but not the same as multifamily dwelling.
Right.
And the reason I proposed using the multifamily housing definition is that that is the definition that's used in the State Zoning Act.
Right, right, and that's...
And so they...
So would you propose, Jean, to remove the definition here?
I don't see any reason to have the two definitions. And I don't think... I was scanning it. I don't think the phrase multifamily dwellings is used further. I mean, further on. If it is, it should be changed to multifamily housing anyway.
Okay, there is a... There is in 3.16.2, the last sentence. I see there's a reference to multifamily development.
Yes.
Planning Board should be the permitting authority for any multifamily development in the AHD.
And that's not defined.
And it's not defined and it's not capitalized.
Well, there is a definition of AHD project as a multifamily housing development of affordable housing units as defined in Section 1.3 of the zoning bylaw.
Looking at 1.3.
Yeah. AHD project is defined as a multifamily housing development. So that fits.
Affordable housing units.
Affordable housing units is the defined term that I think is being referred to.
Okay, affordable housing unit is defined in Section 1.3.
Yeah. It's just redundant to have...
Let me ask something on that. I think there is a difference between the two. I mean, 1.16.3.2 says multifamily dwellings, buildings containing three or more dwelling units, where the next one says, you know, states that. But then it also says, or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings in the same lot with one... With more than one residential dwelling unit in the building, which means in this case, there could be four, for example. If there's going to be two, that means there's a minimum of four units. Where B says three, just says three or more, where this one's essentially saying four or more. I think if it's... They're talking about multiple buildings. If it's six or one half of the other, I don't know. But there is some difference between them.
Perhaps there is a slight difference, but this is the term that is used in our State Zoning Act.
Okay.
And we'll be wanting to use that term in any amendments that we make to comply with the MBTA Communities Law, et cetera. So we may as well use that term here.
Yeah.
Which is 3.16.3D?
No, C.
So...
Sorry, we're giving already two different pieces of information. What we're saying, if I understand correctly, Lee, is to remove B, multifamily dwellings, and to keep C, where C, like Charlie, is the state definition.
Yes, and relabel it as B.
Correct.
Yeah. And the next one is with C.
And then site table review becomes C as opposed to D.
Right.
Right. I think that's fine.
No, I thought I heard... I thought I heard wanting to keep E and eliminate C, but yeah.
No, I think that he's right.
No, I think C should... Yeah, I think C should stay.
C becomes B, yes.
Yes, it becomes B, yeah.
I guess the only thing I would insert in the last sentence of 3.16.2, where it talks about any multifamily development, I think it probably should say any multifamily housing development. I would just add the word housing there.
That's probably a good change.
What's that again? I didn't get that one.
In the last... Second to last line of 3.16.2, insert housing after multifamily.
Okay.
So it'd be multifamily housing development.
Okay.
Oh, keep the word development?
Well, I guess it's not...
Yes.
Well, AHD project does talk about a multifamily housing development. I mean, you've got to use the word.
So keep the word development, but...
Development or project. You need a word like that.
Insert housing.
Insert the word housing.
Right. Okay.
Can I ask for clarity? Does the ZBA have any permitting authority for multifamily? Don't they... Aren't they participating in a friendly 40B?
Well, 40B is different than multifamily housing under zoning. Because 40B is governed by state statutes and designates the ZBA as the authority. In our zoning, we regulate multifamily housing. And because it triggers a site plan approval, it's the planning board.
Right. So I just want to... So I just want to be clear that under the scope of authority, which is really for this board, for this district, the planning board shall be the permitting authority for any multifamily housing development in the AHD.
Yep.
Right. So if this project, for instance, never happens...
I just want to mention that I just did a find search of this document for multifamily dwellings. And the only place that it occurs is in this definition. You don't use it again in the bylaw.
Okay.
So there's no reason to have it if you're not using it.
Okay, well, good. Jean, did you feel compelled to include it?
What? No, I'm the one who suggested deleting.
The definition of multifamily dwellings is redundant and...
So Paul is now suggesting as well, multifamily housing. We would delete that, too.
Well, no, I'm going to search for multifamily housing.
Oh, I thought...
I only search for multifamily dwellings.
Oh, okay. All right. We already resolved to remove that anyways.
Right.
So then...
Okay. Just if I can go on. In the... On the second page, there's a footnote number one. And we were talking about parking areas being located in the buffer area. And I added a clause talking about what happens within that 10 feet. And it's, comma, "Which setback shall provide a landscape buffer?" I think we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah, that was just to add some clarity.
Yeah. Then, the next change that I made...
Pause, pause before you do the next one. I just want to clarify something. On Section 3.16.7, where it says, "In the off-street parking requirements shall be .5 parking spaces per dwelling unit." I guess the question I have is, is that setting a maximum? I hear it's setting a minimum. What about maximum?
There's no max... There's no maximum. I suppose in theory, you know, the Housing Authority should... Could come in if the zoning passes and with a site plan application and propose one parking space for every unit. It's a minimum. .5 is a minimum.
Parking requirements are minimums.
Yeah, that's a minimum.
No, I understand. No, I understand how it basically is coming across as minimum. I only ask because I think on the plan, the plan there were 250 units or so and there were 100... How many parking spaces were shown?
.5.
125 or so parking places. So in theory, there was no room. There wasn't room in this particular plan for more than that. More than that anyway, I don't think. And keeping with the green space.
We're very constrained with the site, number one. And number two, generally, you're not going to build any more parking than you have to.
Yeah.
Because that's expense that we have to raise dollars to fund.
It also cuts into your green space.
Artie, are you asking that because you want to make sure that they don't have to come back to us if they choose to... If they decide that they need more parking?
I'm asking that because that's some of the concerns have simply been the traffic and the traffic from the site and what could happen. I mean, in my opinion, what could happen is what's going to be what's right here. That's what's going to happen. That's half a parking place per unit. But some people... The fear... The fear factor is, well, it could be one parking place per unit. I don't see how that's ever going to happen unless you have a lot less units. Then it's the same amount of cars anyway. It's potentially anywhere. So that's why I'm asking. Because it wasn't clearly defined and the... You know, the people are fearing that it's going to be a lot more parking. So I think it's important to make sure they understand when it can and when it can't be. And if it can be more units per... More parking per units, this just means there's less units. Because that's the only way you're going to fit more parking is if you have more space and have less units. So in the current plan, I don't see how you can do it... I don't see how you can do it anywhere with the current plan. So the plan would have to be completely different in order to have more parking anywhere. I'm just trying to alleviate a fear of what's out there, that's all.
Okay.
Just talk more fear, making sure it's understood.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then on that, I guess it's still on the third page. Footnote number four, which is talking about mechanicals on top of the roof. I added an exception for roof-mounted solar energy systems. Right.
Okay. Here, I probably should have talked about it. I think we're treating... We're in the solar bylaw, we're getting rid of this language. We have this language you have for the solar. The New England Business Center, Highway Commercial 128, Mixtures 128. We're getting rid of it. It's part of the amendment under solar because it's going to be covered by the solar bylaw. So I think probably we want to get rid of it. And we're also getting rid of it at where we have it for municipal uses. Because essentially, the solar is all going to be regulated as an accessory use and you'll be able to cover the entire roof with solar panels. So I think probably the phrase, to follow the pattern what we're doing for the New England Business Center and the other districts, you're going to want to delete the phrase solar or... Delete the reference to solar panels on the roof. Delete the new phrase you have. And solar will just be governed under the new solar bylaw we're going to adopt.
Wait a minute. Do we have... Remember, we're creating a new zoning district here.
It's a residential district. So it's going to fall within the residential rules.
Well, but we specify in our zoning... We'll have to look at it when we get to the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But we do have specs... We do specify single residence A, general residence. Single residence B, conservation residence.
So we should add this.
It's under the residential label and it grabs the apartment districts. And it will grab this district because what he's doing... Because what he's doing is he's putting this district under the First Amendment that he has, B, in the class of districts in the residential category.
Whereas we name it elsewhere, should we name this district?
No, what he's doing...
When we get to the zoning bylaw, we should make sure that is covered.
That is covered.
That's all.
But I think right now...
We don't need to change this bylaw.
But we don't need to... This bylaw should not have the language in it that we're deleting from everything else. So we should... It should not have the language about solar panels on the roof here. The story has it. So in the second... The second line of the fourth footnote where it says solar or photovoltaic panel, that should be deleted. And then you don't need your exception in there anymore. Because you're not even talking about it.
Okay.
Because the... Under the solar accessory bylaw, you'll be allowed to put solar panels on the entire roof.
Well, that hasn't passed yet, has it?
No, we're drafting it now.
It'll be in the same town meeting.
It's going to be the same town meeting.
We're going to be discussing it right after you guys are done.
But you're confident this is going to pass?
Well, we can do the solar first. And if it doesn't pass, we'll amend your article and stick it back in, I guess.
Okay. All right. You know, I guess I'd like to avoid that outcome. And that's like my inclination would be to leave it in because...
Well, then we've got to take it out. I mean, because then if the solar passes, we're going to be deleting it.
Oh, you mean you'd have to make reference to this?
We had to delete that section then, right? Which would be in your base. I'm assuming the solar...
Not uncommon for the planning board to, you know, or some proponent to make a change. We probably will be going forward with solar for obvious reasons. But the mechanics, I would leave up to everybody else.
So we'll do the solar article first on the warrant.
All right.
And this would follow, I think.
Okay, so I... I guess we'll take your suggestion.
I don't expect this article to pass through unanimous consent.
So just...
I think it's going to be talked about.
Just pass solar or photovoltaic panels.
Do we have provisions in the solar article to remove provisions elsewhere in our bylaw for all the other districts?
Yeah. I added all that stuck in as amendments.
What happens if the Attorney General approves this bylaw but doesn't approve the solar bylaw?
That's the point that Bob Smart's making.
Well, I didn't make it as articulately, but yeah. I was trying to make... I was reaching for that, yeah.
You're forgiven.
Yeah.
So, Bob, you were saying...
Because we've already got some pushback that, you know, from... We've gotten a comment that suggests that our current iteration of the solar may not pass our study with the AG.
Our town council doesn't have that problem.
He does... But that... But, you know, our town council doesn't tell the AG what to do.
Yeah, but this will be... And this will be like an inconsistency of what the rule is.
I know, yeah.
So if you keep this in, then it conflicts with the rule in the other one.
Let me say this.
Two rules, I mean, two rules.
Okay, let me say this. If we have a problem after town meeting, you're not going to be building for a while. You have a problem after town meeting, it can easily be corrected in October.
Well, let me...
One way or the other.
Let me ask Lee a question.
Yeah.
Language like this appears in other sections of the bylaw.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
And so when you're proposing this new solar article, it's going to identify all of those?
Yeah, and delete it.
And delete them?
Right.
Why couldn't it just add... And just make reference to this as well?
Well, I guess we could.
And delete it.
Yeah, put it in here and then delete it in the solar.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do this. At town meeting, this would come up first and the solar would follow.
It doesn't matter which comes first, actually.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
You've got a good point.
Yeah, we could do it that way.
We still want it to be with the...
Yeah, we could do it that way.
You got the gold star today.
And he'd have to go first because then we would be deleting something that was passed.
Part of our funding package is going after some of those DOE, you know, infrastructure bill grants for that sort of thing and which will be covered in. This sounds like a better resolution in the hopefully very small possibility that it doesn't go through this spring. Because we've got to put those funding applications in immediately.
Immediately, that's fine.
All right.
It's a good, it's a really good solution.
That makes sense.
Okay, so it sounds like this is, sounds like this, the language in, in, in footnote four is.
It's state law that keeps us all the time.
That was it. That was, that was it for this, uh, for this article.
Now, you also have another, um, non-zoning article.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you wanted to go over that, if you wanted to finalize this first.
Before we.
Whichever way you want to go.
Let me, let me do this, just to get a quick read of the room. Hands up by the board members. Does anyone have any comments on the non-zoning article? So we're not going to discuss that then tonight.
Non-zoning article.
The article that the.
Rebel of restrictions.
That the select board.
Right.
I feel that the, I mean, I read it, but I read it cursorily because I feel that it's not our, it's not within our jurisdiction. It's a select board and town council issue.
Right.
And, you know, I defer to them anyway, so.
So Jean.
I'm not concerned with it.
Do you have any comments on this article? Natasha? Artie?
No.
Okay. So we're, we're, so we're not going to discuss tonight the non-zoning article. Does anyone have, I'm going to go through alphabetically. Paul, do you have any comments on the revisions to this?
No, the revisions are what we discussed last time. I'm fine with them.
Artie, do you have any comments?
As Paul says, what we discussed before.
With the changes tonight. Uh, Natasha, do you have any comments? Jean?
At a previous meeting, I expressed concern about removing the age and disability requirement. But now that I, now that the select board is in favor of removing it, um, I feel very, I feel comfortable about going, going forward without an age and just a disability requirement.
Okay. So do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. So that's.
Is it appropriate at this point to make a motion to send this to the select board? And I move that we, uh, send this zoning bylaw as, uh, presented to us tonight with the small changes that we've made tonight, uh, to the select board for their next step.
Just to be clear, I think that's just one change, isn't it? It's just to add the word housing.
Yep.
After multifamily.
And to delete.
And, and to delete the definition, multifamily.
So now you're just at A, B, and C instead of A, B, and D.
Obviously, as a matter of law, um, I think on page three, you're making two more amendments under, under, under major project and, um, under minor project. I'm just going to make that amendment, the, the C amendment and the D amendment. So the structure stays the same. I think that at the beginning you have, you know, A and it's set up because you're making, you're, whenever you're amending a different section, it's, it's a different paragraph. So you've got A, which is a class of district. You have B, which is the insertion of the new section. Then you have C, which is the modification to, um, the minor, to the major, minor, minor projects. And so I'm going to structure it that way.
Okay.
It's just a stylistic change, not a substantive change.
Okay. So Lee, you, you're, you're kind of in control of the, the actual document now.
Right.
It's, it's, it's not my issue to, to do that.
I just want to make sure that you understand I'm doing that. So, and everybody understands I'm doing that. I don't like to go off and do something that I have whole people I'm going to do.
Okay.
Hey, Lee, do you mind sharing in what, what you were going to do to stylize the change? I'm just certainly curious.
Okay, so essentially, he's, the zoning is set up, so he's amending the zoning bylaw. He's amending section 2.1, which is class of districts, which is A on page one. Then on B, he's amending, he's inserting a new section, which is section three.
Also on page one.
On page one. And then the next thing he's doing is he's going on page, on page three, he's going to a whole new section of the bylaw. He's making a change to section 742, which is different than what came before it. So I'm going to make that the third change to the zoning that he's making, changing 742.
Well, he starts with C. He already has C. He says amend section 7.4, site plan review.
Oh, he has it.
Make the following changes in section 7.4.2 definitions.
I stand corrected. I didn't see that, Bob.
Okay.
It's fine. It's, it's in there.
Okay, it's in.
Okay.
We got it.
Okay.
Great.
You didn't mess up.
He never messes up.
So on this now, we have a motion by Paul. We have a second by Jean, I believe. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we're all present. We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. We've now sent this up to the select board. Uh, just procedurally, uh, what's the schedule for the select board meeting? And then, uh, and then the hearing for us?
Yeah, I think the select board will take this up at their meeting next week. We're going to send it to them. They will vote to refer it back. And then we will have the hearing, um, it's a date in February.
Twenty seventh.
The twenty seventh of February will be the hearing.
Okay. So, uh, we'll want to plan our February agendas accordingly.
Yeah.
Um, all right, very good. Uh, any other questions about this for the board?
And the map change we need to also vote to send up.
Yes, the map change as well.
Has that been reviewed by?
It's been reviewed by engineering, right.
Okay.
It needs to change. So the draft, there's a final draft in your package tonight, which I think is the final. And they gave us a new consolidated plan, which shows the triangle and the dimensions, which we needed to finish it.
Okay.
But engineering looked at it and I sent Bob the revised version.
So what we have in our packet is what's been approved by the engineering department.
That's correct.
And also town council?
No, he doesn't look.
It's just a map change.
He doesn't look at the legal description. He doesn't look at that plan and the meets and bounds description. Engineering does that.
So I move that we send the warrant article with the, um, map change to, to the select board.
Before we take up.
Take up that motion.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Jean. Discussion, I'm going to turn to attorney Smart.
Okay, so I did suggest one thing to Lee, uh, which is that you change the word follow to follows.
Yeah, I took that back.
Oh, you're, that's all right. You've already, that's, is that in what's current, what everybody currently has?
Uh, I don't think so, right? Because I think we, I uploaded it to the website, but yes, in the version that I have, the final version, it has follows.
Okay. And, you know, the changes that you made, um, look, made sense to me. Um, I did suggest that it would be useful, it might be useful to hear back from the, you know, the, the, um, the surveyor as to whether the references, you know, changing a point to an iron rod and point to a concrete bound, um, whether he was happy with that. I, I haven't heard back on that.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if you want to wait. I, I did ask that, you know, I, I think, I think I, I reached out to him at about, through, through Matt Zajak at about 4:30. So, you know, those guys usually start at seven in the morning, so he's probably done at 4:30.
I'm fine with that. If the board's willing to give me that flexibility.
Yeah, I am. I mean, that's a minor point, but.
It's a minor point, but I, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the first one, because it does start at a concrete bound and then it's clear where it's starting.
Okay.
And it wasn't clear before.
Maybe that it's, maybe, maybe that it's clear on the plan.
Well, the plan shows it.
The plan shows.
Plan shows the concrete bound at that location. It shows the rods at those locations. That's why engineering changed it.
And it shows the iron rod at that.
Yeah, at those locations.
Okay.
That's why they, that's why they made the change.
Okay, then he should be fine with it.
Excuse me, uh, looking at what's in our package, I don't see those references in the document that was in our package.
I think it was an updated version.
It was the updated version that we put on. It was the version I, I, that we emailed you today and it's in the updated package.
No, it wasn't emailed because I was waiting for you.
Oh, it wasn't emailed. I'm sorry. She was waiting.
Yeah, because I took a last look.
It's in the updated version. Here it is.
Took a last look.
It is online, but I didn't.
So this is what we're approving, not this.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Do it, do it.
I'm sorry.
Have you seen this, Paul?
I thought it was emailed.
I am deferring to the engineering department to make sure that it's accurate.
Okay.
I'm not going to look at the meets and downs, I'm not going to look at this meets and downs description and the plan and follow it. It's not a good use of my time.
Right, right. I think we've got it right now.
So now we have a motion. We, uh.
Sorry, Jean.
Any other discussion on the motion? Jean, do you have any other comments on the motion? Uh, anyone else have any comments? Seeing none, uh, all come to the vote. All in favor of the motion to send the map change article to refer to the select board, please signify by saying aye. Aye. There is no nay or abstention. We unanimously resolved. Uh, and voted that motion, so thank you very much. Uh, you guys, I'm sure, have put in your diary the next step with the select board, which will be next week.
Right.
And then in the end of February. So in about six, seven weeks, we'll have the hearing.
We are meeting with Sincon from now.
Oh, good.
And, uh, you know, I guess this will be preliminary because Louise Miller said, who's the chair now, said, you know, this will be the first of at least two meetings. So we'll be back to them, I'm sure, a little later.
We have a full dance card over the next two months here.
I'm sure, yeah.
But, uh, we really appreciate all the work you folks put into it and your support. And, uh, I, you know, think we're really doing something that's been long overdue and the towns wanted to do for the last 20 years. So really appreciate, appreciate the consideration. Thank you very much.
Very good.
All right, we're getting, we're getting there.
Um, so this brings us, uh, um, to the next item on our agenda, which is to review the solar zoning article for May town meeting. Um, thank you as well, by the way, uh, Bob and Reg. Thank you very much. Um, and I will, uh, I, I note for the record, we have an email in our packet from, uh, Stephen Frail, who's the chair of the Climate Action Plan Committee dated, uh, January 11, suggesting modifications to our treatment for small-scale ground-mounted systems. Um, it's his opinion that our treatment violates state law. Um, we do have confirmation. Lee and I have been in contact with town council and we have written confirmation from town council, who also reached out to, uh, Stephen Frail, that our bylaw as drafted is compliant with state law. Um.
I see, I see that Christine is on the list. Can we bring him along?
So I was just going to recommend to do that. Thank you very much, Paul. I don't know if Stephen Frail is going to join or not, but I would invite his comments too.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, I think we can. Uh, Chris, I'd like you to actually identify, uh, two things to start. Could you summarize your understanding of the potential violations that Stephen Frail has called out, A, as a matter of law, and B, as a question of policy? And then provide your guidance on our compliance and best practice?
So I don't understand, I guess I don't know that violation is the right word. As I understand, um, the, the concern that's been expressed by Mr. Frail, it's that the zoning bylaw already allows small-scale ground-mounted solar in residential zones by right already under the existing zoning and therefore that it is not necessary for the town to adopt a new set of zoning amendments that address that issue and allow it. Um, I guess I understand the argument. I don't necessarily agree with it, um, for, I guess, the following reason. It's, based on my understanding, uh, ground-mounted solar is not specifically allowed either by 48 sec, chapter, general law is chapter 48, section three, or by our current zoning bylaws. Uh, and to be clear, our current zoning bylaws do not specifically mention, address, or regulate ground-mounted solar in residential zoning districts. So zoning bylaws are currently silent on the use. So I think, given that it's not, um, necessarily allowed under state law and not addressed in the zoning bylaw, I guess it would be my, uh, suggestion that if, you know, as a sort of approach to this, this, this use, if the will of the planning board and town meeting and the town is that we want to allow ground-mounted solar uh, in certain places, under certain conditions, um, that the town should adopt zoning that specifically does that. Says where it can go, says what the setbacks will be, says how tall they can be, um, et cetera. Does all the things that we normally expect a zoning bylaw to do for a use that's, um, going to be constructed in a residential zone. Um, and that we, as a town, decide where they should go and adopt a zoning bylaw that specifically, uh, addresses all of those things. So that's my sort of, so I think the, the difference in, um, approach is that I understand there's an argument out there that this is currently allowed already. Um, but my suggestion would be that the better approach for purposes of regulating this use is to do that in the zoning bylaw by saying where it can go and under what conditions it can be constructed and used. Does that answer your question, Adam?
It's, uh, it's certainly a good start. Uh, and as far as you're concerned, uh, the town of Needham can establish its own setbacks on a function of, uh, for ground-mounted solar, uh, for a by-right condition, by-right with site plan review, and also for, uh, when to impose a special permit. Is that correct?
Those are decisions that we can make locally, yes.
And that requiring a special permit specifically in the front setback, in the front yard of a property, is legitimate and valid under state law?
Yes.
And, uh, under residential districts, is it also valid then specifically to require a special permit to reduce the setback from what's currently a primary setback to an accessory setback? We've, that's, that's, that's valid under state law?
That does not conflict with state law.
Okay. Uh, are you, in your experience, are you finding, how are you finding other municipalities measuring off the distance and a setback for, um, uh, for ground-mounted? Are they tip, are they doing it off of, or have you, do you know if other towns are measuring it off of the accessory setback versus a primary setback for ground-mounted only?
Uh, I don't know that every town necessarily has a distinction between the setback applicable to a principal structure and one for the accessory structures. You know, I think that's, those, those are decisions that everybody gets to make. Every town gets to make on their, on their own. So I, I can't speak to what other towns have done on this recently. Um, I think it's up to Needham to decide what the appropriate setback ought to be for a, um, you know, structure of this type.
So, uh, yeah, Natasha's or hand up first.
I know that, um, that Lee and Alex looked into the other towns and what they did for those. Are there any, any consistency of using the accessory setback versus the primary building setback? Do you remember?
Um, I don't know that I broke it out that way. I think I just said that it would, that they had to follow the, uh, applicable setbacks for the districts. I know Concord, or not Concord, Sudbury in particular required a special permit, um, if the system was going to be located in the front yard. Um, so no, I didn't, I don't think we actually went, we actually, we just basically said that it had to meet the dimensional requirements for the, for the, for the districts. And we didn't research whether or not that requirement was a, was a accessory structure setback or a, a principal, um, structure setback.
So what I'd like to do at this point is.
And all, and all these setbacks are really different because the lot sizes are different. So for example, in Sudbury, they've got, you know, acre and two acre and five acre lots. And so, um, it's, it's, you know, it's not, you're not necessarily, you know, versus, you know, construction on, on small lots, 10,000 square feet.
Concerned about is the small lot.
Can you bear with me one second?
Yeah.
Please, thank you. Alex, can we bring Stephen Frail? I'd like to recognize him, who's the.
Before you do that, I want to ask for Steve Solomon.
Well, I'll come to you in a second, Artie.
But he's blocked and I need to find out.
I'm going to come to you in a second. I, I hear you. I'm going to come to you in a second. But mechanically, right now, I'd like to invite and have Stephen Frail come over. He's not going to speak yet, but I'm going to, I want him to be part of the conversation, given, you know, his role as chair of the CAPC, who's been a driving force behind the underlying zoning bylaw. Now, before we get to you, Natasha was still in the middle of saying something, so I'd like to extend an opportunity.
No, I was, I was just, no, I was just stating that that's what concerns me is that when you have a really small, uh, lot, if you go to the primary resident setback, you may not be able to do much. Like if you have less than 10,000 square feet, um, going to the primary one would be inequitable for all of those lots, I feel.
So it's interesting. Lee, we haven't really broken it out between a conforming and a non-conforming law. between a conforming and a non-conforming lot. So how would we, this play out? A ground-mounted system on a non-conforming lot?
Well, the setback would, I mean, the setback is, is gonna be what the setback is for the district, whether the lot is conforming or not.
Or not, okay. Okay. Hold on, Paul, hold on, no, no, Arty was first. Arty had his hand up first, he wanted to speak.
No, it's okay, Paul, go ahead. Paul, what were you gonna say?
So, my recollection is that what we have is that as a right, you can have it to the primary setback. And if you need to go closer to the lot line, as close as the accessory setback, which is five feet, or more if it's higher, but, you know, you can do that by site plan review. And I read, you know, solar, solar is in section 48, section 3. So, you know, you can't have unreasonable regulation, you can't prohibit it. So if you have a lot where you cannot put the solar by the setback, then you go for site plan review.
It's a special permit, actually, not site plan.
Well, even if it's a special permit, it can't be denied. Because section 48, section 3 says you can't deny it, you can't have unreasonable regulations. So-
And different than-
The applicant, the applicant makes application to the ZBA. The applicant makes, the homeowner makes an application to the ZBA, sets forth in the application that is, it is impractical or impossible to meet the regular zoning setback for this solar use, solar ground-mounted. And the ZBA cannot deny it, and they have to allow it. They may, you know, reposition it a little bit, maybe have some, some sort of reasonable regulations, but it's, it's not onerous, it's gonna meet state law. And I don't, I think that our zoning bylaw conforms and would allow that to hap, would require in a situation where it cannot be put at the normal setback, it would require that it be allowed closer to the lot line. That's how I read the law.
So, quick question, so currently, without the solar zoning that we're doing, what is the procedure if we wanted to do ground-mounted?
We don't have-
It's not a called-out use.
We don't have it.
It's not a called-out use. It's not, the use is not currently called-out and regulated, unless you were to treat it as a customary accessory use. But it's not regulated in terms, or definitions in the bylaw currently.
But chapter 48 wouldn't allow you to do it, even though it's not one of the uses?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Doesn't the Dover Amendment require that you allow, that you allow solar?
Well, I guess the question is, when you have an accessory use, do you even go to the building commissioner to get a permit? Or do you just install it as long as you're within five feet of the property line?
What would you do right now, right, without them?
You'd probably just put it in.
Well, you go through, you go through normal permitting processes. You get the electrical, you get the structural electrical, you're probably gonna have a plot plan to make sure you're within the five feet.
But it's an accessory unit.
Yeah, accessory, yeah, installing is accessory.
Oh, that's right, you have electrical issues, so you have, you have to get a permit.
Yeah, you'll get permits for it.
So you would be able to do it as an accessory?
I don't know how it's been done. All I'm saying is that, in the bylaw, in terms of its terms, it's not a defined term now. And you'd have to, the building inspector would have to say it's a customary accessory use entitled to a permit under that classification. Chris, you wanna speak?
So actually, I would, Chris, I would, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask, Chris. So, Chris, I think I heard you say that under the Dover Amendment, it doesn't mention ground mounts, is that, is that what you were stating?
No, I think, I think I said our zoning bylaw does not mention ground-mounted solar specifically in residential districts.
Yeah, I heard you mention something about 48, section 3, about ground mounts.
This is, it's highlighted here.
Yeah, no, I understand, I have it right here. So, in, in, in chapter 48, section 3, it says, "or solar energy systems or building a structure to facilitate the collection of solar." So that, that structure is a ground-mounted solar system. So it does specifically call out a ground-mounted solar system there.
So, I wanna be, I wanna be clear about what chapter 48, section 3 says about solar. Because, you know, there's a number of different uses addressed in section 3. There's agriculture, there's education, there's religious uses, there's childcare facilities, and there is solar, and there's a handful of others that I'm forgetting to mention right now. The language of section 3 is a little bit different for each of those different uses. What 48, section 3 says about solar is that a zoning bylaw cannot prohibit or unreasonably regulate solar. So, what that means is that the zoning bylaw can reasonably regulate solar uses. And what, you know, we know from the case law is that a town can't prohibit solar everywhere in town. It probably can't prohibit solar most places in town. I think it is perfectly acceptable, under the current state of the case law, for the town to prohibit some kinds of solar in some places. So there is, I think, as compared to other uses that are covered by Dover, there is, you know, a range of permissible regulation that we can do in the zoning bylaw relative to different kinds of solar in different places in town. So, what is, so, I don't, I'm not sure if that answered your question, Arty, but-
Well, I mean, I guess I would say, I mean-
It is not act-
Wouldn't a special permit be considered unreasonable?
Would a special permit be considered unreasonable? No.
Because then you trigger all the neighbors coming in, and they're chiming in, whether they like it, don't like, and whether they want it, don't want it, and so forth.
I will leave it up to you, as a board, whether it is a good idea or a not-good idea to require a special permit of certain kinds of solar. But it is, under the current case law, it is permissible to require a special permit of certain categories of solar uses. Large scale, for instance, it is, you can require a special permit for that.
Yeah, but that's large scale.
There's nothing, there's no, there's no distinction between small, medium, or large in section 3. These are distinctions that we can draw locally. And I, you know, that's, 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 I think, why we're, one of the reasons we're here tonight, and one of the reasons you guys are considering zoning. There is a range of options available to you as to how you want to regulate and where you want to allow, and under what circumstances you want to allow different categories of solar uses.
And screening, is screening a valid, if we're specific that it's either, you know, trees or a fence or landscaping, shrubbery? Is screening of, valid at all? And if so, under any circumstance?
Okay, so the question there, Adam, would be, is requiring screening reasonable regulation of solar? And there is no case that I'm aware of that says a town, well, that says requiring landscaping or screening is unreasonable as applied to solar. So, that's not to suggest that you should or should not do that. That's, that's a question for the board. But is there anything out there in Massachusetts case law that says you cannot require screening? There is nothing that says that, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Can I just confirm what I'm understanding? What I'm understanding is that for large, for large solar, that there would be a recommended regulation. But for small solar, what I'm understanding is that we're making it more restrictive than what we currently have. Is that right, or am I misunderstanding?
Well, we don't have regulation right now at all for small.
So you have nothing, it's basically on its face permitting it.
So here-
Or regulating it. Well, you know, there's nothing denying it.
There's nothing denying it.
It's an accessory structure.
A small solar.
It would simply be an accessory structure.
Because our zoning by, I, my position is that because our zoning bylaw is silent, it is a judgment call by the building commissioner as to whether what's being presented to him is, is an accessory structure or is a non-accessory structure. And we're giving him more guidance.
Chris has a comment on that, I think.
So, here's my-
Go ahead, disagree with me, Chris, you do it all the time.
No, 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 I, I'm actually, this time I'm agreeing with you, Paul.
Oh, good.
My take on that question is, is there is an argument that small-scale ground-mounted solar and medium-scale ground-mounted solar is an accessory use of residential property. Okay, there is an argument to that effect. I understand the argument, I don't necessarily agree with it for a couple of reasons. Name, I guess the first one being that there's no case that I have ever seen that rules in Massachusetts that, you know, ground-mounted solar is necessarily an accessory use to a residential property. I could, I think, make the argument that it is. I could also make the argument that it is not. But I don't know that I think it's the best practice to rely on that argument if this is a use that we want to allow on a widespread basis throughout town. If small-scale ground-mounted solar or medium-scale ground-mounted solar is a use that we want to allow on a widespread basis throughout town on residential properties, I think the best approach is to include, add that as a defined use to the zoning bylaw and specifically address where it can go, what the dimensions of its placement should be, and otherwise sort of defining in a permissive way where it can go, so that property owners can more clearly, well, property are more clearly able to take advantage of, of the, of the use. Again, it is, I certainly do understand the argument that it is an accessory use of residential property, but there's no case that says that. And the zoning bylaw is silent on the question. So I think, you know, rather than relying on that argument, I say if this is something that the board and Town Meeting and the town want to allow, what's, what, the, the better approach would be to call it out in the zoning bylaw and say where it can happen and where it can't. Does that answer, does that answer your question? Paul?
Before, Stephen, I see your hands up, but before I get to you, Jean had her hand up first.
Yes, following along the lines of what Attorney Heap said, reading the chapter 40A about that no zoning bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate. Theoretically, could we say you can have a ground-mounted solar in the side or rear yard, but you, but you cannot at all have it in the front yard? This is a theoretical question, because that's not what we're proposing. But could, could you prohibit it in the front yard, but allow it in the side and the rear yard of any house?
I believe you could do that under state law.
All right.
Rather, that, rather, doing that would be, would, I believe, be allowed under 48, section 3.
Okay, then, to grant, to allow it by special permit is, is being more generous than we necessarily need to be. And that's, I, I think that is a good interpretation that it is a reasonable regulation in order to facilitate ground-mounted solar on a variety of lots that might have a variety of constraints. Thank you, thank you for your input, Attorney Heap.
Arty?
So, Chris, I understand basically why you're saying that, except in some situations, and this would be an unusual situation, but in a situation where someone has a fair amount of property, and the only place it can go, I mean, again, they never fill the large piece of property, and maybe it's not so large. The only place it can go, it can be, is in the front yard. That's the only place it can be. So it can't be anywhere else. That means the town can't regulate it, because it can't be anywhere else.
There is, there is no, property owners, under, under my, under current Massachusetts law, as I understand it, no property owner is entitled to put ground-mounted solar in their front yard. If you want to allow that, I would suggest that you should allow that in your zoning bylaw.
But except for, except for 40, section 3 says you can't prohibit it, you can unreasonably prohibit it, a ground-structured or a building structure to facilitate solar, you cannot prohibit it.
Saying that it can't, I mean, saying that it, saying that it can't go in the front yard is, is, is not the same thing to my mind as prohibiting.
Well-
You're, you're rather, rather, what the zoning bylaw is saying, if we, the town were to do it a certain way, is that it's allowed in the side yard, it's allowed in the rear yard, it's allowed on the roof, it's simply not allowed in the front yard. That would be, I believe, defensible. But again, that's whether it should be allowed in the, so, I guess all I'm really saying, Arty, is that if you want to allow it in the front yard, allow it in the front yard.
So, at this time, what I'd like to do is, you know, is, is bring in Stephen Frail, who's the Chair of the Climate Action Plan Committee, who's been a driving force for climate, climate action across town and has been very helpful to this board in the initiating process for the zoning bylaw. And I know you have some comments. So, Stephen, I recognize you here.
Thank you, I'll try not to take up too much time. I do have one question for, for Chris Heap before we go. I'm not sure the answer to this. If this bylaw goes through with the proposed language and the Attorney General rules it violates state law, does the entire amendment get canned, or just the offending language?
The Attorney General, if they're disapproving a part of a bylaw, typically selectively disapprove that, just that one section.
So it wouldn't, so it wouldn't have to go through the, the Town Meeting process yet again?
No, if it's 10 sections of the bylaw and one is found to be inconsistent with Massachusetts law, one would get stricken and nine would go through.
Yeah, do you know if the moderator would, would agree with that point as well?
I don't, that would not be the moderator's call.
It wouldn't, okay.
That would be, that would be the Attorney General's call.
Okay, great. So, I just wanted to maybe make some of the same comments that I made in, in the, the email to both you and Adam earlier today, just so the rest of the, the board can, can hear it. So first, you know, thank you for all the work you've been doing on this. It's obviously a lot of time, and it's complicated, and I appreciate the effort that you've all put into it. I wanna go back to one of the main reasons why we, we have asked for this order by law, and it is to expand the use of, of solar. Whether or not we say anything about it today, my understanding is that the building commissioner, at least the former building commissioner, had issued building permits for ground-based solar arrays in people's private property. So there's a precedent there. And, and I do believe, actually, I'm not sure that I agree with Attorney Heap's contention that the small ground-based solar arrays can be restricted unreasonably. And so the state has made very clear, you can't tell people that they can put solar on their roof. They've been very clear about that. They, they say you can't put it up, any restriction on it for aesthetic reasons. And my belief is they're gonna, if, if we want to be the test case for the state, we'll be the test case for the state, and it'll get shot down. I am concerned that we're just going in the wrong direction. So I do, do view this as a further restriction of solar on private property. And for the same reasons that Arty was mentioning, people are gonna have weird yards. Not, not everybody has a place in the center of their backyard or side yard where they could put solar arrays. Sometimes there's trees there, or a patio there. What we're saying here is that it needs to be the center of the property, just like the building. And it's not a primary structure. So I do think that you're gonna be found unreasonably restricting in that regard. I, I think that the reasons that I've heard for the increased setbacks purely have to do with aesthetics. And the state has said we cannot regulate solar for aesthetic reasons. It can only be for personal well-being, public health, safety. Right, those are the, those are the key ones. I haven't heard those raised at all. And I, and I do agree with, with what Paul was saying. I don't know if this was the key point. know if this was the key point you were trying to get at, though, Paul, which is if this goes through with the language and there's a special permit that's requested and it goes to the ZBA, the ZBA cannot say no. Now, if, if there's anything about this regulation that makes a solar array on person, a small solar array that is on personal property, unviable from an economic perspective, and I think that the setbacks could do that, the positioning on the property could do that, and then any requirements for screening could add thousands of dollars to the cost of the, of the array. I, I don't think you guys are solving a real problem. I think you're creating a problem if you go down this rate, right? We, we know there's only been a couple of these small-scale solar arrays placed in town. They exist. You know, I think solar is gonna evolve and we're gonna see more and more creative uses. I mean, what would a building inspector say about a gazebo where it doesn't have a traditional gazebo roof, it has a solar roof? Isn't that a ground-based solar array? Now you've got people trying to decide, well, because it's six feet off the ground, it's a sole, it's, it's, it needs a special permit, but a gazebo doesn't. This is where you're, you're sending us down. You're creating a lot of complexity where there's no need to do so. And I think you're going to create a lot of work for the ZBA if you go down this road eventually. And, and I hope you reconsider this because, because I do think it's the wrong direction. I'll look at that.
Do you have any other comments specifically or to any other specific provision of the bylaw draft in its current form?
I do, you know, I am concerned a little bit about the, the taking away of the fifteen-foot exemption for school and municipal buildings. I had a conversation with Hank Half on that front, and, and his concern is that if you don't have the ability, like we do under the current bylaw, to put a fifteen-foot, fifteen-foot canopy over roofs of schools so they could go over the mechanicals, that limits the amount of solar. And Sanita Williams was a test case in that. There's substantial shading from the mechanicals on the Sanita Williams building, and it required them to reduce the size of that array. So they've maximized it, but if you look at the photos from above, there's a lot of roof that's not, not taken up by solar on, on Sanita Williams.
Right.
So I think that I would encourage you to consider putting that exemption back in. I, I am conscious of the fact that, you know, some people might view that as another level of height for the building, but it's our current bylaw. It must have gone through a process to get there. And, and I think taking it away again is moving in the wrong direction towards limiting solar when we need every single square inch that we can get.
Thank you. I.
Need to clarify something on that, Lee, is when, when Hank and I were talking, it sounded like there might have been removing it from there and then just putting it somewhere else, allowing the municipality use somewhere else in the zoning, in the solar bylaw. So just removing it where it was and putting it somewhere else. I didn't think, I'm fairly certain he did not want to strip it altogether. I think we're just.
So we eliminated it in Highland Commercial, NEBC, and Mixed Use 128. And then basically we added it back in. So I think on building-mounted at fifteen feet, you're right, and we did not add it back in.
Yeah.
Building-mounted canopies.
No.
And we did not, and we did not add it back in, in, for the municipal use. I mean, so we, we could just leave the municipal use alone and not amend it, just leave the language as it is right now, which would allow them to have.
Yeah, there was one problem with the language, and that was a, that was a setback that needed to be eliminated and make it be the same regulation that was gonna be in Commercial 128.
Well, that's a policy question. I mean, they have a current set of rules. I mean, do you want to change their current set of rules or, I mean, that's a policy question.
If I'm understanding this question correctly, Chris, is this the scenario where if we allow it for a municipal or institutional or a public use throughout any district in town, that we really ought to allow building-mounted canopies, which I think what we're talking about, also to, you know, to any private use throughout all of the districts as well? Is that correct?
So if you believe that a certain type of solar should be allowed on the roof of a building that is the size of a, you know, new public school, I think you would probably want to make the same allowance for placement of that same type of solar on a similarly sized private building. I, I don't, so, in other words, I'm not, I'm not sure why the town should get the benefit of zoning that would not similarly benefit another owner, another type of owner who is able to build a similarly sized building. Now, there may not be any size such owner, and there may not be any such building. This may be just a pure hypothetical, but again, if a certain category of solar is gonna be permissible on a certain, certain size, size of building, I think that would best be true regardless of who the owner of the building is. Does that make sense, Adam?
Yeah, I think it does. So for the board.
I can think of an example. I think I can think of an example, because if we're only allowing it in, in those districts that are on the Newton side of 128, I'm thinking of the New Roach Brothers building on Lower Chestnut Street.
Right.
And I would, I would think that the size of that Roach Brothers building is about the size of a small school. And if we allow it, and, and what Chris is saying is if, if we're allowing it for, for municipal buildings in town, wherever they occur, we should be able to allow Roach Brothers to put it on the top of the Roach Brothers supermarket, which right now we would not.
Correct.
No, right now, there's just, just a municipal exemption.
Now, there may, there may be.
Chris is saying that, that, that that's, to allow it for municipal and to allow it for similarly sized buildings in the Needham Crossing area and Mixed Use 128 only would, would not be reasonable because we do have buildings of that size elsewhere in town. And if we allow it for municipal elsewhere in town, we should allow it for those similarly sized buildings elsewhere in town.
Chris?
Is that what you're saying, Chris?
It's just a thought, Paul. If, if, if there's a desire.
Too much. That's what lawyers do.
Yeah. No, it, it's, 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 so, there may be a policy-based reason to allow it on public school buildings and not other types of similarly sized buildings, but as we're sitting here right now, I'm not, I, I can't, I can't come up with it myself.
I think that, I think the framework for the zoning was that it was allowed in the New England Business Center, Mixed Use 128, and Highway Commercial, when they, when those districts were created. And then the schools wanted it added, municipal buildings wanted it added, so we modified the municipal section to give them some of the same benefits that we had given the buildings on the other side of 128, and everybody, and nobody else got that privilege.
So I'm happy to think about that a, a little bit more.
What were, were you talking about other, other zoning provisions?
I'm saying that we added the solar, well, at the time that Mixed Use went in, New England Business Center went in, Mixed Use 128, Highway Commercial went in.
Right.
They had the solar provision in them, and it gave them that fifteen-foot piece above the roof.
Okay, so that's already in our bylaw.
So that went in, that went in when those districts were created because there were special height requirements created for the things that were happening across the highway. And then I think the schools wanted some of that privilege. And we had, we had at that time a height limitation exception for municipal buildings, and so the solar provision was also then given on the municipal side.
Okay, so they've got it now.
They have it now.
They have it now.
They have it now.
And will, and will they have it with the changes?
I had taken it away when I, when I, when I deleted it for the Mixed Use 128, and then I, because I was making them live by the same rules that everybody else was living by, and if they have a problem with that, we can reconsider that.
And it's not the institutional district, it's the use of municipal.
It was for schools and municipal buildings.
No matter what zone, no matter what zone they're in.
No matter where they are, they just had a special exemption.
Well, the other night when Hank and I were talking, he specifically, he specifically went and grabbed his book to take a look at that spa, and then we were briefly talking about it. And I believe I'm phrasing this correctly, that when Pollard is rebuilt, the only way they're going to be able to meet the requirement for this, the opt-in, stretch code, all the requirement, is to have solar, so it's over the whole building.
No, I think he was.
No, that's, no, that's what he was saying.
I spoke to him today, and there were others, there were multiple solutions to that, Arty.
Well, well, okay, solar with the building is cheaper than the solar, than a parking solar canopy. And so that's what, it doesn't mean there aren't some other solutions, but that's what was said the other, the other night. And so did Hank call you up and ask you to make this change at all, or do we, is it just, were you making it to be consistent with this?
I was making it to be, to be, to be internally consistent, right?
So I think.
So Hank had said, basically, I thought that he was gonna, he was looking at reciting the building into the hill and then actually changing some of the floor-to-ceiling heights to make the solar work on that site.
Stephen, you had your hand up before. I don't know if that was lingering from when you spoke before, or if you had something else to say.
Yeah, I, I, I think someone has made the point that the, the right, the fifteen-foot exemption for municipal buildings was in the bylaw today. So it is, is today's. My concern was that we are adding that right to commercial districts on the other side of the 128 and removing it from municipal buildings outright, which seems like it's going in the wrong direction. And, and Hank expressed that to me today as well when I spoke with him. Think he'd like to see at least maintaining the existing canopy exemption for municipal school buildings. We know from the economics side, the, the more you can get to close to 100% of your energy used from solar, the more return you get from your electrical HVAC systems. So when they look at the, the life costs of these buildings, the, the Mitchell and Pollard, which will be going in, and then any, any other school that has to redo its HVACs, when you have enough solar to power all your electricity, it magnifies the return on investment. And so, you know, Concord, Lexington, they've seen this happen in their, in their schools. The canopies would allow the town to get those buildings closer to net zero, no question. There's just more roof that they would be able to cover. And so it, it's disappointing to see if, if we end up going in the direction of restricting it from the districts and thereby also re, the registered residential districts and thereby also restricting it from municipal buildings in those districts. That just feels like a bad policy.
So we have a number of new policy questions that I think we need to consider. One is, do we allow a municipal exemption in all districts? Do we allow, and this is for so, building-mounted canopies? Do we allow building-mounted canopies for municipal property anywhere in town? Do we allow, do we now open this up, building-mounted canopies to all districts subject to a fifteen-foot height, and, and we're no longer restricting it to the geographical areas? So therefore, to your earlier point, Paul.
Well, that's how I was hearing Chris's point.
Right. So now it's up to us, I think, as a, as a function of, question of policy, do we want to allow building-mounted canopies throughout town as of, as of right? You go ahead.
I definitely want to improve municipal buildings.
Yes.
Okay, I'm clear on that. I, I want to put municipal buildings back in there. Question I have is the example that I gave, which is.
Roach.
Roach Brothers, and there were probably other buildings in town, in Needham Center, maybe, that have that size of a roof. You know, if we, if we then say, well, if we allow it for the municipal buildings, we have to allow it elsewhere and all, all, all over town, I can see allowing it on the Roach Brothers building. Roach Brothers comes in for the special permit, and the neighbors on Maple Street, you know, are filling up the room, opposing it, because we've, we've had experience with the neighbors on Maple Street not, not liking to have things built up in their, in the views from their backyards and from their bedroom windows.
What's the height restriction on that district?
On which district?
Chestnut.
On Chestnut Street, it's thirty-five feet in the underlying district, but then you've got the overlay which takes it above that. I mean, I, I just have to get the numbers.
I mean, that's just one example. I don't want to focus in on Roach Brothers, because there have to be, you know, there has to be other buildings in town. I don't know whether they're in sections of town that, 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 that would be so close to residential areas that it would be, I mean, you, you could be talking about. You could be talking about the roof of the hospital.
Forty-eight feet.
Forty-eight.
In Chestnut Street in the overlay.
You know, the, the, the hospital is borders residential district on Lincoln Street side.
Yes, correct. Jean?
We're talking about whether it's fair to allow it for, for municipal buildings but not for commercial buildings in these zones. Does the municipality have a special obligation under state law, even federal law, to, to reduce its fossil fuel use in a way that private parties do not?
Chris, that's to you.
Or for those who are more experienced in the solar field than I am, perhaps Mr. Frail or, or Mr. Proctor.
Climate Action Plan were certainly putting forward a municipal requirement to reduce our carbon footprint.
The cover.
There's no question about that.
It is the town under an obligation to do that.
Chris, are you aware of the legal obligation? And then Stephen will come to you.
We certainly want to reduce our footprint to the maximum extent humanly possible, I guess, but I think that's true of both public property owners and, you know, as a policy goal, private property owners as well. So I, I don't know, Jean, in response to your question, I don't know of any regulatory basis for saying the town has a better, has a, more of an obligation to reduce its, its, its emissions than anybody else. So again, there, there may be a basis to draw this distinction, but, and, and I'm happy to think about it further. I just, I just, I can't speak to it right now.
No, I, I think if there were such an obligation, US Town Council would have heard of it. So I, I, I take that answer to, to mean that, as you said, it's likely that commercial property owners and the town itself are, feel the same commitment, but not necessarily an obligation. All right, I was just trying to see if there was a difference that, you know.
I do want to add something, just, we got money from the MS CBA, I mean, from the MSBA for some of our projects, and the state, the energy code just changed last July, and they require lead and require all these other things that are continuously changing. So we're going towards net zero and decarbonization anyway. So it's gonna happen, like it or not. I think restricting it in general is, is not gonna work for very long, you know, because that's just the way that the trends are going.
So you're saying, like, for example, getting a state branch to rebuild Pollard, that state likely would require this kind of.
There's these executive orders even from the state, from Decam, any property that, you know, 44 and 584 that, that require all of these more stringent requirements. But MSBA is, is paying, it pays for, I mean, it paid for a, a good chunk of Hillside, and it probably will, I'm not on PPBC anymore, but it will probably pay possibly for any new construction that warrants, you know, if we're on the queue for it. So the state's gonna be pushing that way for, for, for schools, per se?
That's a good, that's a good distinction then between the private property owner who isn't necessarily getting any kind of state grants and the municipal property owner who probably will be getting state grants.
But the, but the.
Loans. Loans.
But the private owners will get incentives for being, for, for being more green, and for be, or for having solar and PVs, because there are incentives for them as well. Because if the, if the town doesn't set those incentives, um, the, you know, EverSource or whoever it is, can-
So, let me backtrack, because I'm totally confused about what we have in our zoning bylaw that's, that's in front of us. Right now, what we have drafted, what can Roche Brothers put on their roof?
They can put, they can put, uh, they can put a, a roof-mounted system-
Right.
On the roof, on the roof of their building, and they're limited, they're limited, uh, by the height, and they're limited by what other, um, uh, elements they have on the roof of their building. And they're, and they're limited by other factors that come into play with calculating how much area you can use, you need-
So they can't put a, they can't put a roof-mounted canopy on their roof?
No, they can't, if they have a 48-foot height restriction, and they're only at 25 feet, then they have another 23 feet to go.
That's not currently permissible under our bylaw.
That's not true, I don't see, I, I don't see that, I don't see that being true at all.
Lee, isn't it true that our zone, that this draft zoning bylaw only allows a building-mounted canopy in those other districts?
The draft, but he's saying, what do they currently, what can you currently do?
I thought, Paul, you were asking based on a, on a draft.
No, no, I was asking based on our draft bylaw.
Oh, sorry, I-
What could they, what could they do?
Yeah, so I-
Yeah, he meant currently, as in the zoning bylaw that's currently in front of us.
So you're saying currently, if they, if the height restriction is 48 feet, and they're only up 25 feet, they can build anything, and they've got 20 feet that they can put anything on their roof?
I don't think this zoning bylaw actually can stop them from doing that, to be honest, I don't know if it can.
Chris, is that, what's your legal read of that?
If they have, so I, I don't know the answer to that question, and I'll fall back on the, because, I guess for a couple of reasons. If they have the height to play with, if it was rather, if they're underneath the, the current bylaws maximum building height, and they have area to build up, um, in a dimensional manner, they can probably do that. As a matter of use, is a building canopy, except, of the type we're talking about, accessory to, uh, the commercial use of the property? Possibly, uh, that's a question for the building commissioner, so I don't know, I'll, I'll still fall back on the que, on the sort of general idea that, you can allow these, or you can prohibit them, um, you know, the, the, the question for the board when you're working on the bylaw is where do you want to allow it, where do you not? But, so that, that, that's sort of a punt on the actual question that was posed. But it's a question, that, that's a question for the building commissioner, I don't, I, I can't say definitively whether that would be allowed or not.
Stephen's hand is, I'm not sure if-
Stephen?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to get back to, uh, Gene's question about whether or not towns are held to any carbon goal reductions. So they're not, my understanding is that the state has bound itself to hitting certain greenhouse gas emission targets. And so it's statutorily required to do that, to measure progress, and then to put new programs in place to get the state back on, uh, the, the state back on course if it doesn't. So that's like the official, the written, um, I think one thing to kind of remember though is the state is made of cities and towns. Um, and if we don't make it easy for ourselves to hit those greenhouse gas emission targets soon, by opening up solar, for example, as broadly as we can, um, that means that the state is going to be statutorily required to put in harsher measures. So right now, it's all carrots, you know, at some point, it's going to be, it's going to be tough medicine, if, if the state is going to meet those goals. Uh, and that's going to affect the town, right? So the MSBA funding is one of those examples, where they require towns and cities to adopt the new, um, specialized code in order to receive the kicker on the MSBA funds, you can only get 1%, and now you can get up to 3% or maybe 4%, I can't remember the exact number, but only if you pass that opt-in code. The Green Communities Grant Program is now changing now to a Climate Communities Leader Program, and is requiring new things like an EV first policy for municipal fleets. They're also requiring solar siting, right, so there's, um, as Natasha was saying, that the state is constantly turning these dials. So you can put restrictions in place in these things, but my prediction, as we talked about in the first topic, is the state's going to slap you down. They're going to slap these things down, and they're going to make them required and default in the building code. So why go through all the effort of putting in a one-year, two-year, three-year moratorium on the types of things that, let's be honest, these are aesthetic choices we're making, and I don't think the state wants us to be making choices based on aesthetics.
The aesthetic comment, I want to put a pin in and come, uh, we'll talk about it shortly, but for, uh, but this is helpful guidance, so, I want to get a poll right now, it's 8:45, we still have other items on our agenda, we're still in the process, it sounds like, of redrafting this zoning bylaw. Just, not by speaking, but just as a matter of by hands, who supports, enabling a municipal, enabling building-mounted canopies across all districts in the town, and all uses?
Regardless of height restriction?
Up to the, up to the, the height restriction of 15 feet.
15 feet above the current?
Yeah, so for, so for Roche Brothers-
It would be 15 feet above the high-
Plus 48.
Right, above the 48.
So it'll be 63 feet.
Plus the 48, I thought the 48 was the-
No, no, aren't-
I'm confused as to what you're asking us, that's what I'm thinking.
48 feet is the current height restriction for the-
That's the maximum.
For the district.
That's the maximum height that Roche Brothers can have right now, that's for that district.
Correct.
So that's the example that we're using. So right now, we're allowing, the way I'm reading the zoning bylaw that we have drafted, we are allowing building-mounted canopies in very few districts, and we're allowing it 15 feet above the maximum height.
Of that, of those districts?
Of those districts. I don't see in this zoning bylaw where we are allowing a building-mounted canopy, roof canopy, even though it is still within the height dimension that is allowed in that district. I'm reading this to say, if you're not in those districts, you can't have a building-mounted canopy, period, no matter what the height.
So-
So I'm thinking, may, maybe, you know, if, if, if we don't want to go to 15 feet above the current height, which we're allowing in those districts, and which we want to allow for municipal buildings, maybe we can add something that says you can have a, a-
Building-mounted canopy.
A building-mounted canopy as long as you haven't exceeded the height restriction for your district.
Up to a maximum.
Up to a maximum of the height restriction for your district.
No, that-
Two maximums, one is 15 feet, and the other is the maximum of the district, is that what you're saying?
So it's a good question, so the clear, the clarity is, or the clarification is, up, uh, up to the, the, the height, the excess above the district height for mechanicals, and for a second, let's call it a canopy mechanical. The mechanical height is 15 feet, but the overall district height is 48 feet, so it's a policy question for us, if the building, if, if Roche Brothers could be 48 feet, but in actual fact, it's 30 feet, and, uh, a solar canopy is, let's say, uh,
Doesn't exceed the 48.
Yeah, so if you're at, so if you're at 45 feet with, with the solar canopy, that would be permissible. My only question to that is, Lee, isn't it the special permit, isn't that a special permit height as opposed to a by right height?
Yes.
So if that's the case, then does that mean that we were, we have to allow this by special permit as opposed to by right?
I thought it was an over, the overlay is by special permit.
Yeah, exactly. So-
I mean, if you're, if you're asking me, I think the municipal buildings should be able to have it at 15 feet above, and I think that everybody should have it by right to whatever the overlay is, or whatever it is.
That's where I'm going.
Yeah.
Well, the question, so-
Well, but the building to begin with is by special permit. So you're adding something to a building that requires a special permit. Do you need, do you need at least site plan review for it, or do we just allow it as of right?
Under the current scenario, we're not requiring it by site plan, are we requiring site plan review? No, I don't think that we are in those discussions, are we, Lee?
I have to get there.
Well, Roche Brothers didn't have such, they worked in front of us for such a review of the new building.
They didn't trigger it, I mean, they're, you mean, when they redid their parking lot?
No, they just rebuilt the whole building.
I know, but they, there was an existing building there.
It's the same footprint.
It did, it did not trigger, it wasn't, it was, it was within, within the same footprint of the building, and they just altered their parking lot. So they did not create 25 or more parking spaces, they did not put up a new building that was 10,000 square feet. They resurf, they re-faced their existing building that was there, so there was no trigger there, and they didn't create 25 new parking spaces, they just reconfigured their existing parking lot, so the ZVA had jurisdiction.
And specifically, to your point, those districts that we named where building-mounted canopies are allowed, we allowed not by special permit, but by right with site plan review.
Right.
So, it, it does get funky in a scenario where you've got a building that wants to, you know, redo the building.
So a building-mounted canopy, sounds to me like it, it's a canopy, so it's like something that's on stilts,
Yes.
and then it's covered, and it's open underneath.
Usually for parking.
Well, but if it's on a roof, you don't have, you don't have roof parking. I mean, parking canopies are a separate, are a separate item.
Or in a parking garage is one of the things.
I think, I think that if you're within the height restriction of the zone, it should be as of right. I don't even see why you need site plan review for that.
So now, if the, if a building is coming down, and we have a proposal for a new building in its place, that was before under the by right height, now it's going for a special permit height to 48 feet, and they're going to go to 48 feet, you're saying that they can't get a building-mounted canopy. It's only if they're, if they're building at-
At the height of the district.
The by right, the, the by right height. Are you sure that's what you want?
But by special permit, they could go to the 48 feet and use that-
They can go to 48 feet, so they should be able to put a canopy up there.
And use that space for a canopy, right?
I think that if the building, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that if the building is at the by right height-
Yes.
They should be able by right to put a canopy above that to the special permit height, because they're not adding to the building, they're not putting a new enclosed building structure, they're not adding a floor to the building that's in the special permit category, they're putting in a canopy, which is an open air kind of a system. So I think that if the building is as of right, they can put the canopy above it as of right, keeping it within the dis, the, the height of the special permit height.
Right.
I think that's perfect, I, I would think that would be perfectly acceptable, the fact is, I don't know how often any, any business will ever do that.
One at a time. And, and those other districts, they can go up another 15 feet.
I, I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear that I don't agree that I think that they should be allowable in, in, in zones where you can go to a higher height by special permit. If you're going to do that for the sake of putting in a canopy, you have to get a special permit. That's, if, you know, that's my position on that.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying it's by right, and, and the reason, part, part of the reason I'm saying as of right is because it's open air, we're saying in our bylaw that these solar structures are not buildings, they're accessory. They're not building buildings, they're accessory buildings. And, you know, we're not requiring special permits for accessory buildings, if you're within, within the zoning limitations.
If the building is allowed to be 35 feet, 40 feet, whatever it is, as, as of right, then I would think the, the developer should be allowed to do whatever combination he wants as far as building height, solar height, and getting to that point. Beyond that point, if, if, if there's an additional height beyond the point that we allow for special permit, then they can come in for a special permit if they want to go higher.
That's right done.
Yeah, like, so that's essentially what I think-
Are you agreeing with Gene?
No, I think I'm agreeing with you, as of, as of right, if, if they're allowed to go to that height as of right-
They're allowed to go to 35 feet.
35 feet as of right to go to that, they should be allowed to do whatever combination the developer wants to do. And if they want to go higher, they say they're 20 feet from the building, from the regular building, 15 feet, the solar canopy, go ahead, you're still at 35 feet. If they want to go above that, then, then they need a special permit.
So above the 35 feet, is that what you're saying, Arnie?
If that's what, whatever, whatever, whatever the district is-
Let me try to put it into plain English. The as-of-right height is 35 feet. You build a building that's 35 feet high, you now want to put a solar canopy on top of that building. The special permit height is 48 feet. If you were building a building that's 48 feet, you'd have to get a special permit. You're built, but you're building a building that's 35 feet, you're adding a solar canopy above 35 feet below 48 feet. Okay, you're adding, because that's, that's 13 feet, you're, you're adding 13 feet. Do you need a special permit, or can you build the solar canopy as of right?
Special permit, because you're going up to the special permit height in my opinion.
Then you're agreeing with Gene.
Yes.
Then you're agreeing with Gene.
Hold on a second, Lee, what did you just say?
You're going higher than the special permit height, because you're going up to, from 35 to 50, 35 to 15.
No, 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 no.
You're going to stay within the 48.
You're going to stay within the 48.
Permit height. It doesn't have to be 15, 15 feet, the fact is, most of them will never be 15 feet, any, high anyway, and all likelihood.
And the building might not be 30 exactly.
Yeah.
But, but Arnie, to, to your point, I just want to make a distinction. The, the, the build height may not have the, may not measure at 15 feet, but if you have, if you have multiple things on your roof at different heights, you have to build the canopy over the tallest piece, so if you're at, if you've got a piece that's 10 feet, and you've got a 16-foot, you're a foot up, and you're going to be, you've, uh, for 20 feet, you've got a 5-foot pitch.
Not pitched, these solar canopies-
Uh, it can be flat, some are-
These are not pitched.
Some are.
The solar panels within them could have certain fluct, fluctuation pitches going on, kind of a V pitch going on, you know, the, the, the solar canopy is not going to be pitched.
I mean, we, we, we've seen some flat examples, and we've seen canopies that are of an angle, so-
The point being, well, the point being is if-
Sorry.
They can't, if there's, if there's a structure in the way, and, and e, even if they want to build a, even if the structure in this case is 10 feet high, but the exhaust is going straight up, they're, they'll open up the solar canopy to allow that exhaust if they need to, it's just, there'll just be a hole in the solar canopy, no, basically no the difference. So they can do whatever, they can do whatever they want to work, work around whatever's going on up there.
Yeah.
That's not a problem, that's not a problem.
Lee?
I guess I was going to say that, you know, I think it's very important that we get this done, and that we come up with something that people will accept at town meeting. And so the current framework, you know, is allowing these solar canopies on the other side of 128, and it's allowing it over municipal buildings. Are we served by just kind of, in making sure we maintain that existing framework, and don't talk about expanding it at this point, and getting all these other things done, and then we can have a conversation about expanding the solar canopies to these other districts, I'm just concerned-
Well, that's a question for Stephen, because he's the one that's suggesting he's going to make amendments from the town floor.
Well, I mean, I'm just concerned with getting the whole thing done, and I'm also concerned with the cut, with the complexity that this now adds at this stage of getting something drafted that we can start to process on if we want to get it to a spring town meeting. And so we have a framework to get all these other things done, which I think are important, and if we codify the structure that we currently have, so we're not taking away rights on the municipal buildings, and we're just kind of creating a different framework of how we're going to regulate it on the other side of 128, and get that done, and then if we- And then if we wanna look at solar canopies on the Roche Brothers or the Sudbury Farms, we kinda look at that independently.
I get that, I don't disagree with that, but I just, the, the salient question is whether or not we're gonna have amendments from the floor. If we wanna buy six months or a year or maybe longer, like ADUs, how long was it, Gene, from the time when we did the first ADU bylaw to the time we did the amendment?
Well, I thought the concern was municipal, which is why I was saying, let's just fix the municipal piece of it.
So in other words, in other words, include the municipal exemption.
Yeah, don't change the municipal exemption.
Right.
Just leave it alone and they have what they need and then, and then we're not doing.
I think we all agree on that, right?
They'll leave the municipal exemption alone and then they.
We're all agreed.
We're all agree with that.
I don't know if that's the case.
And we have it on the other side of the highway and just stop there.
I, no, I agree with that.
I don't wanna be in this, I know. Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, so maybe this is a, is a rubric. Anything that you write, make sure that it expands of right to solar.
Otherwise you'll bring a motion on town floor to modify it.
Any new writing that restricts access to solar is something I will probably have to seriously consider striking, just a red line. So I, I think if you change, if you change the, the small base, if you add the restrictions on small, that's a fairly, I think a fairly straightforward amendment to strike the language that restricts to primary setback. And then the same thing with the municipal, you know, I think taking away the municipal exemption is the wrong direction. If anything, I would suggest that some of the affordances you're considering offering to the industrial sector, commercial sector, you add into the existing municipal building exemption. So right now we have, for example, the setback from the edge of the roof has to be at least as high as the solar panel. But if you put canopies on those municipal buildings and then you have to move them fifteen feet back in all directions, you've shrunk the footprint. I think you guys have solved that on the, on the commercial building by not requiring a setback of the height of the solar panel. And so I would suggest just making that consistent on the municipal building. So those are the things that I've turned about. I, I think just in principle, I'm guiding star, don't take away rights that already exist.
So here's my question. Under current, because I hear what Stephen is saying. Under current zoning that we have, because we don't mention solar right now.
You mean the bylaw amendment?
Not, not the amendment that we're proposing, current need and bylaws.
Yes.
You have a Roche Brothers building, it's thirty-five feet high. They decide they wanna put a canopy up that's gonna, that's gonna be less than forty-eight, the total's gonna be less than forty-eight feet. Can they do it by special permit? Right now, can they come to the town and say, we wanna put in a solar canopy, we're above thirty-five feet, so we're asking for a special permit?
I think so.
I, I don't see the building commissioner delaying that.
I don't know that they can. I mean, that's a district that requires mixed use. It requires, it's allowing you to have four stories. I don't know, I think there's a little bit more. I don't know that the answer is so clear. This is really getting.
So I, I spoke to Hank, to Hank earlier today. He made some very interesting points.
Concern with municipal buildings.
No, 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 Hank, just, Paul, I'm gonna ask you to hear me out, please. Hank makes a very interesting point. That while, yes, there is, I guess, a preference for all municipal buildings, that makes sense and do we then call it out between public property and private property? His point on that, one of his points was interesting. That municipal buildings contribute about three percent of the carbon emission in town. And that as far as he was concerned, he would rather a zoning bylaw move forward that, that targeted the biggest emitters, the private enterprise in town, the large buildings. And we were able to provide solutions in the private sector that would provide a greater return and reduce the carbon footprint of the town to a greater extent. As opposed to risking a more complicated framework that, that doesn't get approved because of its complications. We already have heard from Stephen Frail, he's prepared to make an amendment to eliminate anything that he regards as making things more restrictive. We're looking at this and making it more expansive, that's not his view. What I know, cause I've been the one on behalf of the board that's gone up for years to go through multiple zoning bylaws. We're gonna go through and, and start, and, and people are gonna start making amendments. Other than the case, for instance, of the ADU, which was very clear that you could carvate detached while preserving all the other changes. In this scenario where it's already fairly complicated, it's gonna kill the whole thing. I fully expect any amendments from the floor will kill the zoning bylaw. And that's not something I, I want at this time to go through, but it's a reality that we have to anticipate. I would, my, I, I would also go along with the municipal exemption. Except for what, you know, Stephen, except for what Chris Heap has said. That I think we can't single out a favorable treatment for, you know, private prop, for public property. Gene, you've been searching for a good cause on the rationale that supports favoring. I tend to think if we're gonna allow it on one, I think we allow it on the other and I think that we allow it everywhere.
The rationale would be to, to some extent to what Stephen was saying, that the municipal buildings already have it. The industrial, the industrial buildings don't already have it. Because we, we've already carved out an exception for municipal buildings for solar. It's in our current bylaw. So the reason we're adding it for the municipal buildings in this amendment is because we, we don't wanna take away something they already have.
I'm confused. What, what are you saying that the municipality already has?
They have the right to put a solar canopy on municipal buildings up to fifteen feet. That's what Gene said, that's what Lee said.
Above the roof.
Above the roof.
It's in the zoning by.
Up, up to.
It's in the zoning by law now.
Oh. Hold on, please. Lee, in the case of the district that we were referring to, the Chestnut Street District, so you're saying you could go to sixty-three feet?
What are you talking about? I don't know what you're talking about.
On the, on the.
Hold on, hold on.
On, on the police station, you could, because that's a municipal building.
Fair. Now, we're, now where someone comes along, the property owner knocks down Roche Brothers. Let's pretend it's gonna, you know, it hasn't been rebuilt yet.
Yeah.
And now they wanna go to the maximum height by special permit of forty-eight feet.
Right.
I'm asking now, under not our zoning bylaw amendment, but the existing bylaw, can they go forty-eight feet plus fifteen for a solar canopy? Arnie, I think, is saying yes.
No, I'd say that.
No.
I don't see how that could be done.
No, no, he's not saying yes.
Another forty-eight feet period.
Do we wanna allow that or you only wanna allow it to this, uh, special permit height? And to allow it by, well.
And to allow it by special permit.
Stephen, do you regard that as more restrictive or less restrictive? You're muted, Stephen.
That's less restrictive than it is today. That would, that would be granting a new right.
So we would, so by allowing it by special permit, you don't see that as restrictive?
No, because I don't think it's allowed to that height. You, you can do it below the, the non-special permit height, right? But you can only do it to whatever the current, the height limit.
Okay. Okay, so on that basis, he, that would not be carved out. So I would, I would tend to allow it by special permit, a solar, uh, building mounted canopy by a special permit up to the special permit height. Is that what we're saying?
I, I, I would, I would argue something here. So Lee, Lee is certainly making a valid point as far as how complicated we're, we're making this. And, and we wanna make sure we get it, we wanna make sure we get something through. The fact is that municipal buildings are already allowed in there. Forgetting about there could be three words that could be stripped. It's in there now, just leave it in there. What we're allowing on the other side of one-twenty-eight is an extension beyond the building height. That's what's going on over there. The fact is, that, that actually doesn't change anything anywhere else in this, anywhere else in town. As far as what you can do with solar canopies up to the special permit height. It doesn't, technically that doesn't change this. This is an allowance above that height. That's what this article is saying. It's not saying you can't do it, you can't do it anywhere else in town up to the special permit height. It's saying this is a special situation, we're allowing in that section of town above the special, above the allowable height. It's not changing anything anywhere, anything, anywhere else in town. And I would, and I would argue that is true. Because that is something additional we're giving to that part of town. We're not taking anything away from any other part of town. So we're not to say anything about anything, anything, any other part of town. Technically, just keep, essentially keep it where we are now.
How I am reading the language in the amendment that we have in front of us that talks about so, solar canopies, roof solar canopies, that I'm hearing you say that up to the special permit height, solar canopies are currently allowed by special permit up to the special permit height. That's what I'm hearing you say.
I believe so, yes.
I am reading this bylaw that we're changing as taking that away. Because it's only allowing building mounted roof special canopies in certain districts, not in all districts. And by saying that language, you're taking it away from the general language of the current bylaw.
But, but if in that paragraph or in that language, it's talking about we're only allowing it in this, in this district to go fifteen feet above the allowable height. That's not taking.
That's not what it says. It says, it says roof canopies are allowed in the following districts.
Right, it's only in districts, right.
Okay? So if you say roof canopies are only allowed in districts A, B, and C, then the legal interpretation would be they're not allowed in districts D, E, and F.
But if we have something.
Period. But you're saying that currently they are allowed in districts D, E, and F.
And they're not.
And so we have to add language to make sure that they're still allowed in districts D, E, and F up to the special permit height.
Then I think all we would have to do is something tagging the fifteen feet above the allowable height. If we tag that as part of that bylaw, then, then we're not taking it away.
Chris, are you able to?
We're arguing as, as, as to what the wording should be. Because I think, I think we're, I think we're in agreement that we wanna continue to allow. I think we're in agreement that under current bylaw today, if somebody were to apply today, they could put a roof canopy up to the special permit height by special permit.
Right.
And we wanna make sure that this bylaw doesn't take that right away.
Correct.
So we have to, I say that we have to add language to make that clear.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, go along with that. I think, that's what I was saying earlier.
That's what you were saying earlier.
But I think, Gene, you were proposing it as.
But that's not where, but that's not where Lee was going. Cause Lee was saying you're causing further drafting that's gonna cause a problem both, both for timing wise.
How much language is required?
What?
How many words are required, Paul, seriously? How many words are required that's making, making it clear that this requirement allowance is only related to the allowance above?
I have to get to the.
To the zoning by law?
I, I have to get to our amended bylaw. Where we talk about basic requirements.
And all this, all this says in D is, in the New England Business Center District, mixed-use one-twenty-eight district and the portion of Highland Commercial one-twenty-eight located A, north of Highland Avenue and B, south of Highland and west of Second Avenue, solar energy building mounted canopy systems are permitted as of right subject to site plan review by the special permit granting authority.
I think we have to, well.
And then it doesn't define the height that it's allowed at.
Yes, then the height's basically.
Then the height is, the height is elsewhere. I'm saying by having it in D, limiting it to these districts, you're taking it away from all other districts where Arnie is saying they're already in all other districts.
That means that in that language there, when we're talking about the districts, we could, we could put in that paragraph and the language right there, it is, this is specifically related to the fifteen-foot.
Uh, no.
A additional height above.
I think, I think in D, we have to say in D, oh, this is talking about as of right, subject to site plan review. I think in D, we wanna say in all other business and industrial districts.
And residential?
No, we're not talking residential, because we're not talking flat roofs and residential.
You're correct, yeah, yeah, front end, no, we're not, no.
In all other business and resident, in all other business and industrial districts, solar energy building mounted canopy systems are permitted
To the district's height.
As of right to the height of the as of right. No, we get, not.
Exactly.
Are allowed in all other districts. In all other business and industrial districts, solar energy building mounted canopy systems are permitted by special permit and also subject to site plan review.
And then when we get to the height section.
Then when we get to the height section.
We create a new box for all the other districts.
Right.
Now, there's two other things here. One, you have mantered roofs on homes, multifamily and single family have.
Right, but they're not canopies.
Well, if it's a flat roof, it would potentially.
Manus is not predominantly flat. That's part of the roof structure.
I mean, they have some of the, oh.
Yeah, I, I would just, I would keep the language business oriented.
So.
What about municipal? Sorry, Gene, go ahead.
We're leaving municipal alone.
Just wanna understand this. When you look at the height charge.
Yep.
Um, and the, especially looking at page four, where it talks about building mounted canopy and presently allows it only in those across the highway zones. And it allows them to extend fifteen feet above the roof surface beyond applicable building height limits. For other business and industrial zones that would wanna specially list them, it would, would, would we be saying that building mounted canopy solar energy systems are allowed? But only, but, but if they exceed the by right height, they, um, that would require a special permit to go to the special permit.
We're saying special permit all across the board.
All across the board.
In the, in the prior thing, for drafting simplicity.
All right.
Then what we're gonna add here is.
But, but.
Building mounted canopy solar energy systems where currently says New England Business District, MU one-twenty-eight and HC one-twenty-eight districts and all municipal buildings
Okay.
can be added there. It says may extend up to fifteen feet above the roof surface on which the system is installed beyond applicable building height limits.
And then we'll have another.
Then we add another.
Yep.
Then we add another. Okay? Building mounted canopy energy system, flat roof with predominantly zero pitch, all other industrial and business districts may extend up to applicable building height limits.
Correct, yes.
Up to applicable.
And underneath it, it's just another row.
Yes.
And, uh, 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 yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we separated.
And what that would mean is if, if the height limit is thirty-five feet by right, you can do it by right.
Yep.
And if it's, um, if it's, if, if to go higher, you need a special permit, you need a special permit.
No, he's, he's made it all special.
I've made it all special permit, but if you wanna do it that way, we have to change the wording in, uh.
Previous.
In, in, um.
Okay, but then, then I misunderstood you. If you, if you're just gonna do it all by special permit.
We're doing it all by special permit by, by ease of simplicity of wording.
Okay, okay. Sounds like we have made a decision after our forty-five minutes of discussion.
For building mounted canopy?
So then we'll, and, and then we'll get rid of the language we have now for municipal, so then it's all, it's all sitting here.
Chris, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, it should all be sitting.
Yes.
Yep.
Are you comfortable now we've fundamentally changed.
Except for the affordable housing district, that should be sitting there.
How we treat building mounted canopies. We're allowing it now for municipal property. And then we're also allowing it in. And then we're also allowing it in other commercial districts. But by special permit, I'll come to in a second, I'm in the middle of a conversation with Chris. You're, are you, do you see how we made those changes?
I, I followed the discussion and I'm comfortable with, with where you've ended up.
Okay, and Stephen, you've got your hand up?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so the one thing that, just to double check is what are your setbacks on the canopy for municipal versus the commercial?
There are no setbacks on the canopy, Stephen, period.
Correct.
Oh, okay, so that, that's, that's consistent as long as that, because I think currently the municipal language says it does need to be setback.
Correct, yeah.
We'll delete that section. And in the reference will just be to the same rules that apply in any BC mixed use 128 and highway commercial 128.
Yeah, that's setback on that language, Stephen, was a carryover from systems being on the roof themselves.
Right, yeah, agreed, yeah, so just making sure.
That makes sense, the canopies, there's no logic in that law on the canopies.
And we talked about that last time, that you're going to set them anyway.
Yeah, yeah, there's no logic in that.
So, so I think we now lead, are you clear on the direction of the board for building mounted canopies?
I think so.
And for municipalities? Do you want to double check one more time then if?
No, I have Paul's language and I think, I understand how he's, how he's created it and I think, I think it makes sense and it will work, I just have to play with it.
So the municipalities, that those buildings are going to be sitting under the same regulations as the other side of 128 where they can go 15 feet above.
Yes, municipal building and schools, because you need to say both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're saying schools?
And schools, because that's how the other, other language is done, was missing, it was in that section that we're changing.
Does that include private schools then?
Chris?
Oh.
No, it's, it's flat.
So if you're saying schools.
Well, wait a second, let me just, well, I don't know, let me see what it said. Let me, let me go to the language that we changed.
I would think it would.
Well, we are talking, we are talking predominantly flat roof surfaces.
A municipal building would include a public school.
Well, maybe that, let me just go, but the section that we have that we're deleting is.
So Chris, while Lee's checking into that, in this section on page four, we talk about flat roof with predominantly zero pitch. Is predominantly regarded as a word that's too ambiguous? Do you prefer something that's more specific? That has a pitch no greater than five degrees or 10 degrees or 50 degrees? Is predominantly sufficiently vague?
Or old schools and other municipal buildings. That implies that the, that you're talking about municipal schools.
That's ambiguous as well.
Yeah.
I just think you should say municipal buildings. You say municipal buildings and that would cover schools.
Yeah, that would cover municipal schools.
Right. This building, it would include other buildings.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, I'll just say municipal buildings.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, I've asked Chris another question, so we're, we're kind of moving forward.
Predominant.
Yeah, so Chris, what's your answer on predominant?
Can someone explain to me what predominantly zero pitch means?
Is that like a rhetorical question?
We're asking you.
That's a real question.
Flat, who's Chris?
You need the pitch to drain.
Yeah, there's always going to be some, some type of pitch.
It can't just be a flat roof where you, you can't drain it.
Yeah, I mean, they, everything may pitch in the same direction, or there may be four pitches going off in different directions. But we're, but we're talking like half a degree, you know, we're talking like, you know.
Well, we say a quarter inch per foot.
A quarter inch per foot, yeah, we're talking something incredibly low pitched.
But, but if a building is large, a quarter inch per foot could be six inches or eight inches, that's why we're not saying it's not flat. Or bigger, or, or two feet.
A, a single family house is 50, kind of.
But you still need a parapet, so that it doesn't extend above the wall of the building.
Right, but the rest of it is 1,500 square feet.
Yeah, but, but on some buildings, when you have quite a large building, you're going to have drains in the middle of the building.
I don't think that that predom, I think it just means that, that if, even if, even if the pitch to the drains occur, that they would be above it, and I don't think that that's.
I just want to get legal clarity. I, I think it's sufficiently clear that the building inspector will be able to apply that phrase.
Okay, good, thank you. So now, we've resolved municipal buildings, we've resolved the building mounted canopies. The question that, the remaining question, I think, is the ground mounted.
Ground mounted, small gra, small ground.
And medium, and medium ground mounted.
I think, I think there's much less concern about medium, much less concern about medium.
I think it's small.
I don't, that's not what I heard from Stephen.
We did, but I don't think we resolved it.
I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any objections to the restrictions on medium. In fact, the, this is why the model zoning law and the CAPC recommended that you define small, is really to segment it off from.
Bring the cats back together.
So it's really meant to be in opposition to medium and, and large. But the recommendation of the CAPC was to, just for small, by right.
Yeah, to let, you know, so the language that's in the chapter 40, A, A, section three, Lowell, Lowell takes that language as, as God type of thing. This is it, we're not going to restrict it. Either Methuen or, or Methuen or one of the towns up there, some, another town up in that area takes it as what it means as well, they're not restricting it. I didn't even search any other town that had it. I basically just started searching for the language that's in the Dover Amendment. And that's where I started finding it in various towns, is what I found. They're saying, this is what it is, this is, we're not going to, we're not going to put visuals, we're not going to put visuals in place, we're not going to restrict it, that's what they said.
So my understanding that there are three items here. One is, is it an accessory setback, right? Is it an accessory to have the?
Yep.
Right? The second one is, is there screening?
Yep.
And the third one is the front yard. And what Stephen is saying is it should just be by, by right, all of it. And we had put a lot of caveats to all of those three items. We had made it a primary and we had screened it and we had said that it's by special permit in the front yard, is that correct?
Well, so more specifically, we said anything in the front yard is, requires a special permit. Any, uh, side and rear yards are permissible by right up to the primary set, up to the primary setback. And if you wanted to go down to five feet or the accessory setback, that's when you would need a special permit.
Special permit or site plan review?
Special permit.
We started, we started the site plan review. But then, but then the end of last week, we went to special permit.
Chris?
No, on page five, C setbacks, it's the Board of, it's, you have to use the district setbacks, district level setbacks. And if you want to go towards the lot line, the building, Board of Appeals may grant a special permit, reducing the minimum side yard setback to no less than five feet.
Chris, is screening regarded as like aesthetic only? For the purposes of Dover?
I don't understand, I don't understand the question, Adam. You can require screening if you, if you believe screening is a, that allowing, I guess you can allow screening, it's not impermissible.
Okay.
And we only required for the reduced setback option of five feet too, yep.
Sorry, Jean, what did you say?
I said we only required the screening for the reduced setback option.
Right. I, I mean, I'm probably, I'm okay to let everything, to let the side and rear setbacks to go by right to the accessories, to go to the accessory. But if it's at a certain size, I do think where it's permissible by law to have some screening, you can have this thing that's going to be eight or 10 feet. It's going to be like a single, a two, a two-car garage is 600 square feet. We're allowing 1,500 square feet. That's one and a half times the size of my house. That's not a small thing that you're looking at, and it's going to be 10 feet. And if it's going to be five feet from Artie's yard, then I, I think having some screening on that for the other neighbor is a reasonable thing, and we're still getting it by right.
But allowing it by right, the five, using the accessory on the side and rear.
Well, I just want to make sure, I think to, to some extent, we are allowing it by right. If they meet the requirements for setbacks, as defined in section 1.3 and section 4.2. So if, if it's a small accessory structure, it can be in that area, right?
But small is like a shed, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But you'd never do an array that's just the size of a shed.
You just never do that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You certainly could do it.
No, Jean, any, any, any of the, well, any of the ground mounted had to need this setback for the, for the primary building.
For the primary building.
I didn't, there were no, yes, and then if you went, and then if you wanted to put it at the accessory setback, you, you needed a special permit.
Yeah, okay.
So to give you an idea where things are, a couple of things. One is, we're, we're requiring the lot coverage has to, it has to stay within lot coverage. It has to stay a certain distance around the, distance within the primary structure, 10 feet. So we have those requirements, which are going to shrink any, any size of an array, any size of a ray anyway. So in a normal 10,000-foot lot, we're not going to have, we're not going to have an 80, we're not going to have an 80-panel structure, which in, in a, sorry, a 70-panel structure, give or take, is around 1,500 square feet. A 40-panel structure is around 800 square feet. A 40-panel structure is by far the biggest anyone would ever have. Even then, that's, even then, they're not going to have that in their, their quarter acre lot. They're simply not going to have that size in a quarter acre lot. It wouldn't make, it wouldn't fit no one, it wouldn't fit with the setbacks and the distance from the house, I don't think. So I think, so we don't have to go to the fifth, we don't have to jump to the 1,500-foot square feet dimension as, as something which might happen, is it can't happen.
But why don't you reduce it to 800 square feet then?
I'm talking about it can't happen in a 10,000-square-foot lot.
So then why don't you take?
It can, it can, it can't happen in an acre lot.
An acre lot.
So do you want to make the change then for smaller lots?
No, he's just saying the practical, you, you don't need to make the change.
You don't make the change.
The practical matter is not going to happen.
The setbacks will decrease it.
So then why, so then why not prohibit a, a canopy, a ground-mounted system at 1,500 square feet? Or anything over 800 square feet?
I, I think, I think it's unnecessary, because one thing, if they can fit that, then the yard is much, much bigger.
Exactly, if they can.
If they can fit that, the yard is much bigger, because the yard is much bigger anyway.
So I think that where you're saying that if they can fit it, that's the whole point.
No, if they can, if they can fit it, or want to fit it, the large, the yard is much larger. An acre lot, they can put it in an acre lot, that would probably fit perfectly fine. It's not going to fit, and it's not going to fit in a quarter acre lot, it's not going to fit.
Can I get clarity on where Stephen is going on 6.13.1B? Because we've been talking about ground-mounted solar energy systems without distinguishing between small scale and medium scale.
He only cares about small scale, the medium and the large are fine.
Medium and the large, well, first of all, I don't see large being allowed, I only see small and medium being discussed.
Large, small, or something.
Well, it's, it's, you overlay the landfill, we're not touching that.
Right.
We're not dealing with large in this pipeline already exists.
Right.
We're dealing with small and medium.
Small is the only one. So for medium, for, for medium scale, Stephen is okay with permitting it only in rear and side yards as of, um, medium scale ground mounted shall be permitted in the rear and side yards as of right, subject to site plan review.
For medium?
For medium, so it's not allowed in the front yard, medium is not allowed in the front yard, period.
That's, well, that's what he said. Stephen, is that consistent with?
Yeah, so that's my, that's my understanding, is that medium is because of the size of those arrays? I mean, you're talking 80-plus panels, those types of.
But you think, okay, but you think small should be allowed in the front yard?
I think small is potentially, the state might actually say yes. I mean, unless you have a safety reason, and you might, you might say that passersby could very easily approach a high voltage situation if they're near a solar, solar panel. Kids playing in the front yard, right? Who aren't your own, own kids, for example. So you, you probably do have more of a safety argument for restricting those arrays in the front yard. In my opinion, I'm not a legal scholarship, but that's where the state has said regulations are reasonable. I mean, it is still this gray area, and I, I think, you know, Chris was saying earlier, it, it's unknown. There hasn't been a, on what reasonable means. But it's, it's clear that if people pass by. What's that?
Well, I mean, we do have some examples that the state has already approved. So in the case of Sudbury, they only allow it in the front yard by special permit. In the case of Wolburn, they disallow it. So there are circumstances where the AG has already approved bylaws that have those provisions with those parameters.
Was that based on size in the front yard? In other words, you said.
No, just front yard, period, right?
Just, just in Wolburn, you can't have it in the front yard. And in Sudbury, you can only have it in the front yard by special permit.
But the AG said what Walpole did was wrong.
Was lawful, lawful.
Well, I, I mean, we just looked at the bylaws online, so in Wolburn's bylaw, they prohibited it in the front yard. And Sudbury's zoning bylaw that they had online, they permitted it in the front yard, but only by special permit.
So what you're saying is the AG assented to those zoning bylaws?
Yes, they have to, if they assented, or it wouldn't be in their bylaw.
Well, is, is Wolburn a city? If Wolburn is a city, they don't have to go through the AG, right?
Yeah, then Wolburn wouldn't have gone through the AG, Sudbury would have gone through it with their special permit.
Sudbury certainly would have gone through it.
Okay.
I don't remember if Wolburn is a city or town.
Is Wolburn a city?
I don't know.
So, yeah, so for those front yards, certainly then the regulations are, is probably on those safety issues. You know, you've got high voltage in the front yard.
I recognize Chris.
No, Chris was saying.
So saying that it can't, so you're not allowed, under 48, section three, the town.
City Hall.
Sorry, one at a time.
I think they're a city, yeah.
Say, Chris?
Say again, please, Chris?
Under 48, section three, the town may not prohibit solar. Saying that solar cannot go in the front yard of a residential lot is not prohibiting solar. It is something different, that is regulating solar. You're allowed to regulate solar. So you are perfectly able, the town is perfectly able to say that you can have solar on the roof, in the side yard and the rear yard, but not in the front yard. That is permissible, that will be approved by the state. I'm not saying you should do that, that whether it can go in the front yard or not, that's a policy question. But as a matter of law, I do not believe saying that you can't put solar in the front, large, small or large, in the front yard of a residential lot is going to be struck down as prohibiting solar on the lot. Because you're providing other available methods of putting solar on that house. You don't have to allow it everywhere, you just can't disallow it everywhere.
So let's leave it the way we have it.
Just leave it by special permit.
Except.
Special permit, small, small by special permit.
In the front.
Large, large not allowed, in the front yard.
And, well, medium is allowed.
I mean, medium.
A medium is not allowed.
Medium is not allowed, small is allowed by special permit.
Now, the side, the accessory.
Well, before, before we get to the side and the rear, Stephen, would you challenge it on the small in the front?
No, no, I, I actually agree that, that that's, that's, it sounds like there are bylaws that are out there. I would probably point, though, that that's reasonable regulation, that's not prohibiting, that's reasonable regulation based on public welfare, safety, or health, right? Those, those are, you'd probably be able to, to defend based on that. I think you'd get a harder time defending public safety, health, or welfare by restricting in the back.
Okay, so on the front, you're satisfied if we allow it by special permit?
I would be satisfied, absolutely.
Okay, so that's what we already have.
On the side and the rear. You feel that, that we should be allowing it as of right, all, all the way to the accessory setback line?
Yes, because I believe that is, that is the interpretation the building commissioner has taken in the past. And I believe that if we restrict that, we're taking away solar potential.
So if this, if this were a negotiation, right?
Sure, go ahead.
Based on, based on your email, I think it's fair to say you've gotten tonight, have, you know, satisfaction on all of your points. If we go to by right, small scale, to the accessory structure, setback, up to five feet, but we do require screening at a five-foot setback. Will you challenge that, or can we agree that to let this go and see how it? Or can we agree that, to let this go and see how it plays out for a few years?
Um, I don't know, I, I would feel like it would be worthwhile challenging if you get to that point. I'm not sure how you can do requiring the screening if it's by right, though. I don't know what your mechanism for enforcing that's going to be.
I don't think we need that. I think it's just the building, they have it clear in the, I, I've got, so two things here. One is Chris, but Jean, your, your hand was up first.
I want to make sure, that I understand what we're proposing. I, I, I understand what is written in, in the draft. And the way I interpret what's written in the draft is that if you comply with the setback requirements, and that means for accessory structures, which this would be an accessory structure, any accessory building or structure that exceeds 15 feet in height must comply with the underlying district's rear and or side setback requirements.
For all districts.
However, we are allowing by special permit you to go to the five feet. Now, is that what we want? Isn't, I thought that was what we?
So that's what was?
Everybody was okay with.
That we were, but we're, we're reconsidering this.
Yeah, I think the change last week kind of threw a little bit something, at least myself, it threw a little bit something in there going from a site plan review to a special permit for everything, everything related to smalls. I mean, I understand why that, that was requested, but that, that changed, that definitely changed things.
So while we agreed to it at our last meeting, two weeks later, we don't have agreement on it?
No.
So now the question is, what do we do?
For the side and rear setbacks.
For the side and rear setbacks.
Well, two weeks ago, we agreed on site plan review. We'd agree on special permit on the back, on the five feet, we agreed on site plan review.
That, I?
No, we were site plan review, we agreed on.
If the site?
Yeah, but the problem was that, I mean, we, we just basically had a, a problem with that, because only the planning board issues site plans, and we don't want to be in the business of doing that. And ZBA only issue special permits, so we had to figure out a way of putting it into the regulatory framework of what the board historically uses, and that was why the switch was made.
So you're, so it was in the last two weeks that drafting this thing, trying to figure it out, Lee spoke to each of us individually. Everybody agreed to that framework before, but between that phone call and tonight, there's now disagreement by some. So as a result of that disagreement, we're reconsidering the board's position. And I had been on this, I think, a bit of a hawk, in the sense that I was advocating for special permit where other people wanted it a little more leniently, that's not a right word, but you know what I mean, in the side and the rear. I, I, I'm, I'm prepared to forego, like, I see the bigger picture, and I see the reasonableness of it. And I, I want consensus on this by the board, and I think it's reasonable to have, I mean, we could split hairs. Like, if, if Artie had a 600-square-foot structure, five feet from the, from the, the yard, you know, I would be fine with, I would probably be fine with that with minimal or no screening. But what I'm not really fine with is fif- a 1,500-square-foot structure, five foot from the yard, with no screening. Some people's side yards, if you think of it on a corner lot, it's, it's basically frontage.
Let me, let me, actually, let me make a point about what, what you're talking about. So when you put any solar array down, in front of that solar array, although we could be talking about the back of it, in front of the solar array, you need, you need clear space. You, you, you simply need clear, you need 50 feet, give or take, of no trees, 60 feet of no trees, some, anywhere around there, maybe a little bit more. So where it's positioned, you know, for example, so it would likely never be positioned on the southern part of the property, next to someone else's property, because the other property could very well have trees, and they would have everywhere to plant the trees there. So they would, so it would be moved back to another location in the property, for example. It would be located maybe to the northern side of the property, although granted, that would be next to someone else's property, but it would be, it would be on the northern side of the property, five feet from the property line. Now, in that case, you'd be looking at the back of the array, not the front of the array. So it'd be a little different what you're looking at.
But do you disagree with the five feet, or?
No, I think, no, we have, we have to allow five feet, period, we have to.
But, but you were saying screen, both screening?
Um, I'm saying, I'm saying that, um, I'm not, I don't have a problem with screening. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with screening, partially because most homeowners are going to do something anyway. So to put something in there, I think is, I think is perfectly acceptable. Again, it could be albercides, it could be, there are many things it could be, where it would serve the purpose. It's, it's never going to be positioned where, it's, it's never going to be positioned where it doesn't work, where it doesn't get enough sun, anyway. So I, I don't have a problem with some screening on it.
So that's where we are.
So I'm fine with the five foot on both the rear and the side, as long as there's screening.
Okay, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
But the screen?
I, I would like to see some process for lar- for larger structures that, that exceed the, the 15-feet height. And whether it's special permit or site plan review, um, a site plan review by the zoning board of appeals would require some amendments to our zoning bylaw in other sections that simply refer to the planning board. It just makes things more complicated in trying to word, get the wording right, but it is possible. However, just knowing our zoning board of appeals, for example, and their behavior with regard to accessory dwelling units, I understand that they only ever disallowed one because it didn't actually meet the particular rules, and they've allowed every single other one. It's just a manner of reviewing, giving notice to abutters, and, and then, you know, presumably approving something reasonable. And I, I would really like to see a process like that.
So for, are you referring to the ground-mounted?
Um, yeah, I'm referring to what's in C setbacks for all other ground-mounted energy systems. Yeah, that we have now, the way we have it now, in, on page five.
So what we're, so we're requiring a site plan review process for medium size? Wait, no, we're requiring a special permit process and designating the ZBA as the special permit granting authority for a special permit for medium size. So that's anything that's 1,500 square feet to 40,000 square feet. That's some, an array that size requires a special permit by the ZBA. The question now is, for anything that's up to 1,500 square feet, we're saying we would allow that, not by special permit, not by site plan review, we're only saying that it has to be screened. And then I've got a question to Chris about the specifics of screening, but I, I...
But it's eight feet, not 15 feet.
Yeah.
The height, the height.
Right, so you're saying 15, it's eight feet for the, the small, for the small.
Well, if they meet the, if they meet the requirements of section four, which do allow accessory buildings.
Yeah, see, I, I think, I, see, I wrote it originally to, for the, off the principal building, but I think the way the language is written now, when we redrafted it?
Yeah.
I think it allows, basically, it to be at the five-foot setback, provided it's, it's, it's at that.
It's not more than 15 feet.
It's not more than 15 feet high. It was my, I think it was originally drafted to originally say principal building. And when you altered it, we played with it, we didn't put that word back in.
That's true.
So I think technically, this language as is currently written, allows it to happen at the five-foot setback, provided it's not higher than 15 feet. And if it's higher than 15 feet, it triggers a special permit by the ZBA.
So I?
But it doesn't say that, because what's happening is it has to live with the setbacks in the section.
That was very astute.
And the setbacks in the section.
Thank you.
Yeah, it refers to section four.
Stephen, do you get what we're talking about here? Okay.
I'm not quite following.
So what, so what we're proposing now is to, I, I, update our zoning bylaw that would allow small scale, which is between, which is up to 1,500 square feet, in the side and the rear yard, by right, up to a five-foot setback with some screening.
Yep.
Jean's point is that, and that's up to a, an eight-foot height. Jean's point is that if they wanted a solar installation in, in those setbacks, and it was at a, and the solar installation would be above eight feet.
15 feet.
Above 15 feet.
15, up to 15.
Yep.
Up to 15, yeah, they can do it up to 15, right?
Yes.
Because that meets the.
So between eight and 15 feet in height, that's, in the side and the rear yards, that's what would require a special permit.
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
Our covered bylaw says that if it's up to 15 feet, you can have it?
Five feet.
Up five feet from the property line.
Right.
If it's above 15 feet in height, then how, what's the setback?
You have to make it.
Then you have?
Whatever the side.
Whatever, whatever the setback is for the building.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you have to go to the district.
So now, this is saying that you're going to have a 15-foot, you can have up to a 15-foot solar, five feet away from the property, which doesn't seem right to me.
And if it's higher than 15 feet high, you've got to set it back to the?
So, but we're requiring that these things be five feet.
Well, no, we're going to change it.
I, I?
Sorry, Lee, what are we going to change?
We're going to change?
There's a glitch in the law.
Hold on a second, one at a time, please, Artie.
We're going to, we're going to change the setbacks to provide that ground-mounted solar energy systems shall meet requirements for setbacks as defined in section 1.3 and section 4.2 of the Needham zoning bylaw, as regulated for each use district in section four, period.
Which is what, does what Jean just described?
Which, which because we're calling it an accessory use, if it's lower than 15 feet, it can be five feet from the property line.
The difference?
Are you meaning?
But we have in paragraph two, it says that ground-mounted, the maximum height is eight feet in SRB and GR districts.
Sounds like there's a contradiction.
There's a contradiction there, right?
You mean since small, small scale, but that only, the definition of small scale goes to the square feet of surface area, it doesn't go to height. So you could have, still have a small scale that's, that's high.
Sorry, I don't understand that. We're saying small-scale ground-mounted in SRB and GR general residence has a maximum height of eight feet.
Where does it say that, excuse me?
Right here.
Oh, just tell me the section.
Give us, give us a section.
So, page, page four, and it's, uh, it's, uh, section two, ground-mounted solar systems. So more specifically, it's, I guess, section?
Small-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems, eight feet, okay.
All of the districts, 10 feet. Medium scale is eight feet and 10 feet. So we can't have one that's 15 feet high.
You wouldn't want one that's 15 feet.
So it's essentially the same thing, it's essentially the same thing.
Basically, and this is at a, probably 886, 15 feet is almost twice as tall.
Yeah, yeah, the only, the only time you'd have something, no, the only time you'd have any type of array.
When we revise the language, we, we must have dropped the word principal structure, which is why, which is how that was designed to work, it's not how it's worded now, but that's how, how it was supposed to work.
Oh, I see, oh, gosh.
Yep, you see what I'm saying?
So?
So you can't have a ground-mounted that's, that's more than 10 feet high.
The intent was to basically have it be the principal structure, it's not how it's worded.
Therefore, what you're saying, Paul, is we don't need, notwithstanding the board and appeals, make rent a special permit. Yeah.
Because you can't have one in the residential district.
Yeah.
But the question is, do you want medium scale at that, at that, at that five-foot, I guess?
Yeah.
Five feet, the reason why you have 15 feet for accessory is because if you have a shed, let's say, you can have a pitched roof, you know, or you, or you, not something, but, or I guess you could have up to 15 feet as, as a flat building, but I don't know. What are you going to do, do a 15-foot fence?
Says the architect.
Well, medium scale is going to be five feet off the property line.
Fence next to it, you can't.
I thought he was just concerned with small scale.
Yeah, the only time you'll, yeah, the only time you're going to have a solar array that's going up to that, you're going to have a solar tracker. And the solar tracker can pitch itself and go, it can go straight up, it can go angled, it can pivot around any angle it wants to. And then, then you can have something which is higher. No one, no one in any normal house around here is going to have a solar tracker, because the economics of solar tracker don't work if you have any shades at the east or west, it just doesn't work.
Okay, so, so what do we want to have?
So I guess my question is, are we having the same standard off of a rear and a side setback for small scale and medium scale?
No, just small.
So?
Right, I mean, small is the one we're talking about.
Then I just want to know what the intent is, so we know how to draft it. So it's going to be small scale, this can be at the accessory setback as of right, and medium scale will be at?
I would just say, to keep it simple, small scale, um, small-scale ground-mounted, uh, small-scale ground-mounted systems, uh, can have, would have a setback of, uh, up to five feet from the side of this rear yards, provided?
But ground-mounted, you know, is going across all districts, some of which do not have accessory setback standards, so?
I'm not saying accessory, I'm saying five feet.
I know, but the accessory standard of five feet only applies in the residential districts, it doesn't apply in the commercial districts, so?
So, so to keep this bylaw and the application consistent, in all districts, small-scale ground-mounted would be allowed up to five feet, and, or as Artie just said, uh, no less, no greater than five.
No less than.
No less, thank you, no less than five feet from the side and rear setback, provided that at five feet, there is screening. And the other, and then I?
No, 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 no. To say at five feet, there's screening, means at six feet, there's not screening.
Who's going to regulate the screening?
How close to the property line do you have to be to, to require a screening?
Five feet.
Five feet, so if you're five and a half feet, you don't need screening.
Yeah, I would, that's, but, no, no, I think what you, what we should do is that up to, up to the setback of the primary structure.
You need screening.
And then beyond, when, when you're at the primary structure, which 12 or 15 feet or whatever it is, then you don't need screening, because you're further, you know?
Okay. So you got that, Jean? You got that, Lee?
So you have five feet, five-foot setback.
Five-foot setback, you need screening if it is closer than the?
Primary.
Primary, uh, setback for the district.
Correct.
Need screening. Now, that's for residential.
That's more restrictive than I would have done, but you guys be you, so I'll vote for it.
Hold on, hold on, more restrictive, we're going to do that, madam.
Why, what would you have done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you say no screening?
I would say screening at five feet.
Yeah, so what if you go five foot three, three inches?
Then there's no screening.
Yeah, you're, I'm not saying I'm right.
If you're here, but if you're, if you're here, you need screening, but if you're here, you don't.
Right.
That's crazy.
I appreciate the rationale, Jack, that's good.
Now, what about industrial districts?
Wait a second, I, I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm really, I'm just not getting it. I'm really sorry, I'm just, so small scale, small scale only.
The small scale, the setback is five feet.
Okay.
Period.
Okay.
If you are between five feet and the distance of the primary building setback, you need screening.
Or the phrase in another way, if you are less than the primary district setback, you need screening.
You need screening.
You need screening, if you're less than that, you need screening.
Let, let Lee work on the wording, but that's the concept.
Okay.
Now, that's for residential. Industrial? Industrial business does not have a five-foot setback requirement for accessory units.
I don't think Stephen.
No, it doesn't have any, no, I don't think he's concerned about that.
He's concerned about that.
What's, what's the setback, is, is it a zero setback?
Whatever the setback is for the district. So it depends on what district you're in, it could be zero, it could be zero.
Okay, it could be zero, it could be ten feet, it could be fifteen feet.
But it's a setback of the district.
It's a setback of the district.
Okay.
The way I tend to think of this, if you've got a commercial building, you're gonna wanna maximize the revenue from that building, and you're not getting, even though you're reducing your expenditure, you're not gonna put six hundred square feet or twelve hundred square feet on the side of your building, if you can otherwise do it, on your, on your roof through panels, and even if you get seventy-five percent coverage on your roof, you're probably, your building's probably gonna have more capacity than the side, than the little side. That make sense?
Yeah, okay, so I just wanna make sure, so we, we got through two of the three items, what was the third?
I think we're done, we blasted through it all.
Okay.
The thing, no, there were, there were additional comments that Justin had, that Hank had, and I think Chris may have had.
That Justin had and Chris had.
I don't know which comments those are.
So let's go through them quickly, so we got the other ones I'm gonna make.
Should we get through Chris's first because?
Sure.
He's here, and then we can let him go?
Sure.
Why do you wanna let him go?
Yeah.
Chris, Chris wants.
No, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overly complicate things, but if, I don't know that you're done with screening, if you're not doing site plan review and you're not doing special permit review, you need to have the bylaw say, I think, what screening is, because nobody's gonna be looking at this except the building commissioner. So, uh, screening as a, if left undefined, will allow for a range of different types of screening, so I don't know.
So we've.
I don't, I.
Chris, in, on page five is an example, where we're dealing with ground-mounted, which is where we would have screening, screening and landscaping of such systems from view from a budding lots or from a street by plantings, walls, fences, and or other devices shall be provided, we'll leave it at that for now, is that not sufficient?
What section was?
I, I think it should have a height.
Section C four.
I think the screening should have a height.
So the, the maximum screening would be the height of the.
The height of the system.
Yeah, exactly.
That works.
Okay, so then, Lee, we're gonna add to the height.
At height of.
The system.
Okay.
Is that concept clear?
That works.
I do have one question.
Uh, Stephen, I'm gonna come to you when we're done with Chris. So, Steve, uh, Chris, do you have other comments?
Uh, I don't have much else.
We had a good comment saying not to use the phrase, uh, special permit granting authority.
Right.
But, but to be specific, and I think that's.
And just, yeah, just say planning board.
Right, right.
You don't need to say special.
No, no, no.
Or ZBA.
Or ZBA.
Whichever it is, right.
Depending on what it is.
Depending on what it is.
So Lee, do you have, Alex, do you have those comments?
Yeah, yes.
And Chris, any other comments?
Uh, I had a couple others, but I don't know that there's any that, um, haven't been addressed, I think.
Wow. So Stephen, you had a question, I want Chris, uh, Chris to stay just in case it relates to something legal. Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah, and your definition of the height of the screening.
Yes.
I don't know how the math would work out, but if you say had a panel that's on a twenty-degree tilt, and the bottom is facing the side yard, and you required the screening to be as tall as the system, ergo, the, the tall part of the panel that's facing, that's further away from the side yard, are you effectively creating a shadow on that panel if it's within five feet?
Yes, yes, so this, in my opinion, the fencing should not have to be more than six feet, I know the system can be eight, but, you know, we're talking, we're talking a fence, the, the system's backed from that, we're talking the visuals greatly cut it back anyway, I don't think the fence might be more than six feet, um, because there's no question that depending on where the system is, the fence will force, the, the fence will force the system further away from the property line, period.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, someone could do some math on this.
If, if the fence is six feet, the system will have to be like, uh, nine feet or something like that from the property line, so there's no need, there's no need to have it be eight, a fence be eight feet high, especially when most fences out there are six feet high.
But I think, Artie, I think that, I thought the proposal was to make it the height of the system, not like a specific number, so I'm just thinking, is it, if it's a six-foot tall at the tall part, and you have a six-foot fence in front of it, and it's five feet in front of the, the panel, is that creating a substantial shadow? It might not, I'm just suggesting somebody do the math.
No, no, if, if the system is heading, if the fence, the system is heading south, that the five-foot mark on the fence is five feet away from that, you're, you have substantial shadowing going on, period.
So do you want to say that the height of the screening should be the height of the system or, or six feet, whichever is less?
Six feet, I say six feet.
Just say six feet.
Just say six feet, I don't, I see no need.
Even if the system is four feet high?
Doesn't, it's, well, it's not four feet high.
Okay, no, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose if it wanted to be six feet, no, no greater than six feet or the height of the array, I mean, sure.
Okay.
Sure, fine.
Okay.
I mean, it's not gonna.
Then the expert says six feet, let's go with six feet.
It's not gonna happen, because the systems start, they start two feet off the ground.
All right.
Anyway.
Then let's go with six feet.
Yeah.
Artie, that does mean that if you have a, a, a system that's starting two feet off the ground, five feet away from the fence, you've got a six-foot fence, that, the bottom of that panel is under the sun all the time, I, I think that's even worse than just saying, make it the height of the system.
Uh, no, you have to understand something, though, that when you, if the fence, if the system is facing south at the southern end of your property, the landowner on the other side can already, can already build something there that's gonna be, I mean, totally shadowing the thing anyway.
Okay.
So you're gonna be, you're gonna be, you're gonna be citing this thing to try to minimize any possibility of shadowing from your neighbor, from, from what your neighbor can do.
Okay, thank you, that's my only question.
I understand what you're saying, though.
So, six feet.
Six feet.
I don't, I mean, if you've got something like Stephen is saying, that's, you've got a six-foot system, and it's set two feet off the ground, two, you know, a thirty, you're gonna see not just the peak of it, but like almost half of it, so what's the point in the screening?
You're gonna see half of it, the fence is six feet high.
But a six-foot system that's set off two or three feet.
Yeah, but if the fence is six feet high and you're only five feet, nine inches.
You know, it's, it's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal, it's not a big deal.
Fence is now, you know.
Yeah, they're six feet high.
Six feet high.
No, no, they're, a lot of them are eight feet high, that's not.
A lot of them are eight feet high, some, but a little more.
Some are six, that's true, and some are four feet.
They have an eight-foot fence, they can do an eight-foot fence, it's their call.
But Artie, but Artie and Steve are making the practical point of the fact that what we're trying to do here is have solar energy, and if the.
I understand that.
Higher fence is going to create a shadow, that's gonna reduce that, we have to.
Back to that end.
We have to exceed to that.
Good, good policy.
Yes, so Stephen, the reason why I don't, from a practical standpoint, don't have a problem with, when, when the array is at the southern end of the property, um, that the chances are they're not gonna be five feet off the property line, because they're gonna have to take into account what the neighbor has on their property, and what the neighbor has can vary, and what the neighbor has can also change, so.
Yeah, especially if you have fights with your neighbor.
Yeah, exactly, so, so there's a practical aspect of this, so I think it's, I think it's okay to put some, put, put a, a height in there, six feet.
I think, so Lee, do you have enough for someone to make a motion tonight that has amended tonight, that we now refer this to the select board?
Oh, no.
So then we're gonna need another.
Oh, no, I gotta read it.
So.
I gotta read it before I send it to the select board.
We'll do it somewhere.
So I, I don't disagree, I just wanted to get clarity from Lee, given what you've just said, Paul, I think we gotta plan, we're not, we're not supposed to meet now before February, but in order, but in order to stay on track for our schedule, I think we're gonna need either another meeting this week or next week.
Absolutely.
When can you have that ready, Lee?
This week, I can't, no, this week.
When can you have it ready, Lee?
Um, I can work on it tomorrow, um, try to get it done tomorrow.
I suppose, Lee, what we could do is, if you're able to make the change.
I mean, we got the home meeting on Thursday, I mean, we have a major, I've just, I've got, on Thursday is, is gone, I mean, I've got, that huge meeting Thursday night.
It's poss, it's quite possible that you make the changes, and if Paul has some objection and Artie has some objection, they can feed those comments to you, and you could send an updated draft without the presence of an actual meeting. But we do actually need a meeting because we have to vote it.
Correct.
We need a meeting to vote it.
I'm just thinking it through, so.
Um, you know, the select board meets on, on next Tuesday, and they normally have this, they would normally have this in their packet on Friday, and so I would normally have the zoning to Kate by noon on Friday, the latest.
So, my, uh, I, a bit of a personal thing, uh, one of my parents has a procedure next week, and I'm driving to Nova Scotia, um, on Wednesday, I expect to be back by the twenty-eighth, I just don't know how things will shake out.
Oh, you're driving next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, we, what's it, yeah, hold on, I gotta do something.
Yeah, for sure.
Hard to be shared by someone, though.
I've been.
Give us a second, we're looking at the schedule with this.
I've done it for two, I've done it for two weeks, for two years.
We could be out of March fifth, if we.
You do the function.
So, so if we, um, the select board is here.
We, first, the order of operations is for these folks to figure out the timing.
If they vote, if they vote to refer it on thirteen.
Because they have to work through the schedule for the town meeting.
We send it to the paper on the night, they vote to refer it, it runs on the fifteenth and the twenty-second, then we can have the hearing on the fifth, that's, we're out for the twenty-seventh.
We still have four more agenda.
We're out, unless we meet on Friday before noon.
Okay, we, we can't do that, so I think we're looking at, we're looking at holding this, the hearings on, on March the fifth, that, we don't, we don't have a meeting that day, do we, now?
We do, and I'll just tell Jeff, we'll do his hearing on the twenty-seventh.
Smooth fest.
Okay, we're gonna have to move the hearing to the fifth, okay, so.
But, okay, and then we'll just have to talk if we wanna do the NHA the same night or what, but.
We'll do the, yeah, okay, so, um, when does, go back, when do we have to?
So we have to, the select board has to do it then, but we have to send it to the paper then, so we could.
We could do it on Monday.
On the fifth.
Oh, we have a.
We have a meeting on the sixth.
And the select would have to do it the following week?
Yeah.
But we would finalize it, and then we had to take, take it to the paper on the following week, we, no, we have to send it to the paper on the night.
We have a meeting on the sixth.
So we could do, we can do it on the sixth, but it has to be finalized on the sixth, because in a sense, what I'm gonna do is send it to the paper on Friday, and to the select to do the referral on Tuesday, then the ad will run after their meeting, so we can do it at the next meeting.
We don't need a meeting on the twenty-ninth, during the week of the twenty-ninth?
No, because we're, 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 we're gonna move the hearing out a week, we're moving the hearing to March, to March fifth.
Okay.
We're gonna move the hearing out a week.
This is definitely not gonna blow us off.
No, but sure, yeah, but if you can circulate drafts early.
Well, I'm gonna work on it, yes, absolutely, I'm gonna work on it this week and circulate the draft, I want the draft final, so when you see it on, in March, on that, nobody has any problems with anything.
In February, February.
February sixth.
On February sixth.
Okay. So, uh.
Update the schedule.
I, I would want, Lee, can you send it also to Stephen Frail when you send it to us?
Sure.
Please, thank you. Stephen, you got that?
In his capacity as chair of the.
Yes, in his capacity as chair of the.
And Chris.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it, and, and again, thank you for all the work and consideration, especially tonight, this was a great conversation.
Uh, thank you very much for your patience and for your comments, um, so I think we have better policy here as a result of this rigorous conversation, I think we have a plan forward, obviously, we're not gonna take a vote right now, but Lee, do you have everything that you need to get to the next draft?
Yeah, I think so, I'm gonna add in the comments that I received from Justin, there were some additional comments.
Oh, Chris, have you seen the comments from Justin?
Who's Justin?
Justin's.
I have not.
Okay, um, please send Justin's comments to Chris.
Okay.
His review, Justin added language about stormwater requirements.
Right.
And I'd like you to look at them and let us know whether we're getting into the unreasonable regulation area by adding.
I can do that.
What?
Was that, was in our package?
Yeah, it's in our package.
I must have read it, then.
Yeah, I think I, I emailed that to you last week.
Yeah.
And I'll make the changes that Chris has read, and I'll make the changes that's us tonight, and that's what will be in the red line that you will get.
Now, the next item on our agenda is the appointment to the charter review working group, um.
Bye, Chris.
Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Bye.
It's been real.
So, I, the, we, the town manager has recognized as the select board really has, has a priority to review, to come up with a system to periodically review the general bylaws of the municipality, the charter, and they are devising a short-term committee, uh, to make recommendations for this town meeting to change the bylaw, uh, to allow for a regular review process, so, uh, I'm happy to volunteer to do that, uh, Lee, do you have, do you have the dates of when the committee will meet?
If it was in what Kate distributed, I, I don't have, typically, that's not decided until the committee is formed.
They, they put it down, they did put it down what the dates of the meetings are.
Oh.
I just wanted to confirm it in my schedule, especially given.
Oh, they did, okay.
So I'm looking at the charter, what, what was in the packet, let me see.
I don't have the physical package, and my battery's almost dead. Do you have it up here, Artie?
Oh, sure.
The, the.
Uh, February seventh.
February seventh and February twenty-first.
Sorry, February.
February twenty-first.
February.
Twenty-one.
At five-thirty PM.
Sorry, what was the first one?
February seven.
February seven?
Twenty-first, yeah.
At five-thirty PM.
Both of them?
Yes.
So does someone wanna make a motion to, does someone else wanna volunteer for this thing? Someone like to make a motion to appoint?
I'll help out.
Is that you? Is that you? We have a motion by Paul, a second by, by Artie. Any discussion? Hearing that'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye. The motion carries unanimously. The next are the minutes of October 3, October 17, and November 7. But do you wanna punt on this? It's like
Yes, yes.
All right, so we're gonna punt, report from our planning director and members. Who wants to go first?
I'll just, I'll just have a reminder to everybody, the home, the home meeting, the community meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, sorry, misspoke. Thursday at 7 o'clock at, at Town Hall. So, I hope everybody has it on their schedule.
Uh, Natasha or Jean, did you have anything else to add?
I think it's a community meeting, and it would be great if everyone could participate.
I'm in. Have me on the left.
And there's a survey involved as well.
I think we already have over 110 people registered this morning.
For the Zoom part.
For the Zoom part of it.
Town meeting members received an email from another town meeting member today through the system. No, 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 effectively, it was a very odd email, because it presumed that the action of the home committee had been taken already, which it hadn't. I'll forward to you what I received.
Would you forward it to me, too? I'd like to see it.
Yeah, okay.
Where did it come from?
A town, a town meeting member, no, through the system, because it's an automated system now.
I don't, I don't recall seeing it, but then I, I don't need anything that I don't recognize the sender from.
Maybe it only went to a certain precinct, town meeting members in a certain precinct.
I don't know.
I'm forwarding this. Who wants a copy of it? Lee?
By the way, speaking, uh, because I'm now looking at my emails, and I had seen this from Exchange Club, but Teddy Eaton just sent it out, uh, the
For, for?
For the town meeting, Ford Peckham.
Passed away, yeah.
Passed away a few days ago.
That's very sad. Natasha, do you want a copy of it?
Sure.
Yeah, Ford lived next to my grandmother on Lock Road.
I always liked the guy.
So, he, he, he lived there, she passed away in 79, 80, and he was there well, you know, well before, recently before that, so he, he knew her. And I'm not sure how much I ever met him when he was there, but
Okay, so, I, um, so one, one thing that I, I do wanna bring up is, is becoming very clear, not just from Joe Matthews, but from many pockets at, around town, that the, there is considerable dismay at the large house replacement of the small homes in town. And I, I, I would recommend that, and Jean, I, you know, we definitely wanna get your feedback on this, but I would recommend that by the end of the summer, we come up with a plan to, to do, to revisit the large house review. I don't think it's gonna be a simple thing. I think it's gonna be really complicated, because to make any effective change, we're really gonna have to open the thing up. It's not just putting a Band-Aid on something. And I think it should, I think that requires a very rigorous public process. Something I envision at least two meetings, probably three meetings, before we have our, our hearing on it. And I don't think, based on where we're at and the timing, from the way I see it, we'd wanna focus the remit of the study group and devise the charter in September, make appointments in October at the earliest, and then we'd have a study period from January through March of 2025, and then make recommendations and debate it, I, I, April, April or May, have any potential hearings, and then we'd be effectively making a zoning bylaw change, a significant one, in October of 2025. I don't see how it's possible to do it before that. And I, the other thought that I have is potentially that we set up a separate committee as well. It's not just the planning board, but I'm, I definitely want some feedback on that. That was the only other comment I had.
Well, certainly, we're in a large house studying committee, and we talked about this before, what their mission was, and I believe either Lee or Alex, you read it out, and that, what came out of that was not fulfilling the mission.
Well
And if anything, houses got bigger because of some policies, which were good policies, but they got bigger.
Now, that's certainly, that's certainly true, without, without having done a detailed study of it, it's hard to say what effect it had. But I do wanna, I recall, and I wish I could recall the name of the person who presented the very reasonable change that could easily be made to, to count attic spaces above a certain height. Yeah, Joe Matthews, thanks for the reminder. And he pursued that a, a couple of times, and we kind of put him off like we've got an awful lot on our plate, which we absolutely do, but to just deal with that as the, as a simple thing that could be done quickly.
I think we could do that.
I, I, we, we could do anything, that's true.
Yeah.
So, and some things are easier than others. But having drilled into this, I, it's a lot more complex than just counting the FAR in the basement and the, or the attic. I think there are, there are different, there are other dimensional regulations. I don't wanna be in a situation where we're dealing with FAR this year, and then lot coverage next year.
You don't wanna do it piecemeal.
No, over the course of six years or 10 years, I wanna do this properly. Good zoning is looking at the, defining the quest, defining the problem, coming up with a, a, a program on how we examine the, the problem, and then devising the solution, and having these meetings so people are aware that it's gonna have an impact, for instance, on the value of your home.
So, we should make a, like, work plan for
Exactly right. So, we'll
And we'll talk about it.
Exactly. So, I, so that's one solution. I'm not convinced it's the, the only solution, and I, but I am convinced that it's important for the town that we reconsider it, and we do it properly. We received the following correspondence for the record, we, aforementioned email from CAPC Chair Stephen Frail, the letter dated January 10 from town meeting manager Kate Fitzpatrick relating to the rezoning for Linden Chambers. We have a notice of hearing from the Town of Westwood Planning Board for a hearing that had been, that's already been held on January 9th relating to a series of amendments to their zoning bylaw, and finally, a notice of a community workshop for Hone from 7 to 9 on January the 18th at Powers Hall, that relates to the MBTA, our, our program for the MBTA, compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye. We have four, from the one vote in the negative by Artie. We are adjourned.